Yes, sir. City Council's in session. Roll call, please.
Ding Felder, Gudes, Maniscalco, Citro, Miranda, Carlson, and Vera.
Here. Some housekeeping. Councilman Ding Felder indicated he's going to be a little bit late because of a family obligation, so he'll be with us shortly. Before, I was told by one of the parties on seven and eight that they have to be out of here in thirty minutes, so I'm going to, if I may, move items seven through eight to go first. These, I don't think are going to take long. May I have a motion to open our... A motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Now, if anyone is going to be testifying in any of these items, please, if you're able to do so, stand up, raise your right hand, and please prepare to be sworn in.
The sworn in will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mary Samniego with Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number seven is a rezoning application that has already gone through first reading. This is a second reading. All required changes have taken place on the site plan or the city clerk's office.
This is number seven.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Carlson, did you want to...
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's not on the record.
Sorry, I have... My company does business with somebody who's in the nearby vicinity.
Okay, and that applies to both seven and eight. And, Mr. Chairman, just, and Council, just a reminder, this is presented for second reading and adoption, so that would be, I guess, a roll call vote tonight? Would that be roll call?
Roll, yes.
Vote for them. Thank you.
Roll call? I thought it was button.
Oh, the machine set up for tonight?
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's proceed. Number seven, if we may. Number seven? Anyone here for number seven? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, St. Pete. We have worked with neighbors, and we have alleviated all those issues. Mr. Michelini is here. I've been here since nine this morning. I need to shave.
So do I.
We appreciate, we appreciate your consideration, and would ask you to consider moving it forward.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from Council? Okay, there being none. Is anyone here from the public here to comment on item number seven? If please so, come forward.
Move to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Gudes, do you sure... Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Miranda, do you sure? Okay. Councilman Gudes, do you mind?
File number PA-18-11. Order's been presented for second reading and adoption. An order's been amending the Tampa Cypress Plan Future Land Use Map for the property jointly located at 7,001 Rowlett Park Drive from light industrial ally to residential ten R-ten, providing for repeal of all orders in conflict, providing for severity, providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in... Roll call.
Roll call vote. Ding Felder abstinent vote. Gudes.
Aye.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Citro.
Aye.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson abstaining, and Vera.
Present. Just kidding. Aye.
The motion carried with Ding Felder being abstinent vote and Carlson abstaining.
Thank you, sir. I try. Okay, next, we're doing item number eight. Anyone here for item number eight? Mr. Pressman, if you'd just...
I'm saying comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, there being none. Is anyone here to publicly comment on item number eight? If so, please come forward at this time.
Move to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Maniscalco, do you sure mind taking item number eight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 7,001 Rowlett Park Drive in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification IG Industrial General to PD Plan Development Business Professional Office Warehouse and Wholesale Trade Residential Single Family Detached, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote, please, sir.
Roll call. Gudes, Maniscalco.
Yes.
Citro.
Aye.
Miranda.
Yes.
And Vera.
Yes.
The motion carried with Ding Felder being abstinent vote and Carlson abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we move onward to item number one.
Mary Samniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number one is REZ-1967. It's an application for rezoning from RS-50 to PD for detached single-family residential development. This was a continued item. It was originally heard at your evening hearing on October 10th. At that hearing, it was continued, so staff members from Natural Resources could be present to ask their questions. Those staff members are present. I will introduce Kathy Beck, and I have a revised staff report that clarifies the code requirements for three removals.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council. Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. I'm here to answer any questions you have on the subject rezoning, but would like to bring to your attention some comments from Natural Resources. Specifically, Natural Resources finds the site plan consistent with the following corrections.
And I'm sorry, I've just, if you don't mind for a second.
Yes.
This is the one that Councilman Ding Felder wanted... Let's, can we continue this just for, until we find out when Councilman Ding Felder's coming?
Absolutely.
Since it was his concerns, I wouldn't, as a courtesy to him. Will, if Brandon, if you're watching this, if you could just ask Councilman Ding Felder when he's... Well, I'll, I'll take that up. Yeah, so let's, let's just continue it as a courtesy to Councilman Ding Felder, since he asked for that.
Certainly.
We'll wait. Oh, no, thank you for reminding me. Okay, so we're going to move to item number three. I'm sorry. Yep, item number three. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Council. LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Council, items number three and four are for the same property, and they have the same applicant. Item four is a rezoning petition, and item three is a special use petition for alcohol sales. Staff request that both items are opened together, and that both items be heard together. And if Council still desires to do it in that order, it's just under the condition that Council must vote on the rezoning first, and then the alcohol can be voted upon second. But we can open them and discuss them together. And we'll have staff present the rezoning first, and then I will come up and present the alcohol for you, if that is Council's desire. And I believe the applicant has agreed to that.
And Council, if I may, what you just received, the site plan, you just received this for the alcohol, so if you could put that aside, I'm handing out the rezoning for, that's going to be heard first.
So if you want to open both, three and four.
They are both open.
At the same time. They're both, okay.
And also, Council...
So we'll have staff present the rezoning first.
And Council, just again, for your information, I'm passing out the motions that would be the sample motions related to rezonings. And one for alcoholic beverages.
Jennifer Mullen with your planning commission staff. I'll go ahead and give the planning commission presentation on item number four, the rezoning, if you're ready.
Yes.
This is located on North 30th Street. It's the Yingling Center. We have some housing across the street, some multifamily housing, and industrial uses to the north, and Fowler Avenue is located to the north of the subject site, and it is a very large parcel. The adopted future land use of the subject site is heavy industrial. That's that almost black color on your, on the adopted future land use map. It is within the Tampa Industrial Park, so a lot of the area is industrial. We also have some residential ten across the street and some community mixed use thirty-five along that North 30th Street corridor. Planning Commission staff did find this consistent. We do, the plan recognizes industrial areas as key economic engines vital to Tampa's economy, but the plan also states that accessory uses to industrial facilities are an asset to the facility, and that is what the applicant is adding through this plan development, are accessory uses, and we did find that consistent with the comprehensive plan policies on our industrial areas. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Mary Samniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Jennifer showed you a copy of the aerial photograph, so you can see the context of this property on 30th Street. Here is a zoning map of the subject property with an arrow behind it. As you can sort of see, the property is currently zoned heavy industrial. There's a strip of commercial general across the street to the west of 30th Street, and then single-family neighborhood further to the west in RM-24. But primarily, this block, if you will, of development is primarily heavy industrial. The applicant is proposing a plan development. The entire site, again, as Jennifer stated, this is the Yingling site located at 11111 30th Street. It's currently a little over forty-three acres, and they are proposing retaining the existing heavy manufacturing use for the Yingling plant that is approximately a little over four hundred thousand square feet. Then they are demolishing about seven thousand square feet on site, and then to the front area now that's parking in a, in a large field. They're proposing the construction of four new buildings totaling one hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred square feet. The buildings are broken out. A little bit closer. So this would be building one will be seven thousand square feet, private cultural facility, and a museum and gift shop. Building number two will be a bar lounge and a beer garden of five thousand square feet. Building three will be a tasting room, restaurant, conference meeting room, which is an accessory use to the Yingling plant itself, as well as to the fourth building, which is a hotel with approximately two hundred rooms, about a hundred forty thousand square feet in total. And then they're adding a microbrewery component to the existing Yingling plant. Based on the combination of uses, they required a total five hundred nineteen parking spaces. They're providing five hundred and eighty-six. All of the parking would be surfaced either to the north of the property as well as to the south. They are doing onsite retention on grade. The allowable FAR, Florida air ratio is 1.5. They're proposed development at .3, so they're well under, they're allowable entitlement for the site. There are a number of protected trees, as well as grand trees on the site. The applicant has worked closely with staff and our natural resources department to protect the majority of these trees. There are no waivers being requested as part of this PD application. The principal reason why they have to apply for a PD is that there is not a standard zoning district that would be allowable in industrial land use category that would allow all the uses that they are requesting. So in order to facilitate all the proposed uses, they're creating their own zoning district through a P plan development. There are some small...
Say anything. Repeat that last portion.
So there's not a standard, the reason why they're doing a plan development is that there's not an existing standard zoning district that will allow all of their uses. There's not one that allows all of the proposed uses of heavy manufacturing, as well as a hotel, as well as a restaurant, retail sales, private cultural facility, and microbrewery. So there's not one standard district that they can point to, to rezone to for a standard, including rezoning. As a result, they're asking for a plan development. There are small changes between first and second reading from Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, as well as transportation has some minor changes, and natural resources, again, has some minor changes for clarification of the tree data that's on the site. But overall, the development review and compliance staff did find this consistent with the city of Tampa land development regulations. It's the pleasure of Council to approve this application. Please remember that there is a revision sheet.
Thank you, ma'am. A question from Councilman Miranda.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. On the staff report, page nine.
Page nine.
There was something I remember reading last night that spoke about the site plan committed does not contain a note providing a full kitchen and all uses. And that was part of the request that, you know, they wanted to have something had to do with the alcohol or something.
That's the alcohol staff report, sir?
Well, I'm just reading, maybe it's all mixed in together, because mine's all stable as one.
Okay.
So I, then, if it's regarding that, but it's not on the site plan.
Okay. I, I think...
Well, I believe it's not on the site plan. I'm just telling you what I read here.
I think that information isn't on the rezoning plan, but it's on...
I'll ask the petitioner.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Petition, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And Council, again, LaShawn Doc, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, and I will present the alcohol request for you this evening. And Councilman Miranda, the note that you're referring to, under the large venue criteria, it requires that the full kitchen is provided or that the hours are stated. And the applicant has put...
I'll ask the applicant a question. Thank you very much.
Okay, yes. And, and Council, the request before you this evening is AB-21920. Mary has shown the area for this request, but I'll show you the zoning map again on the property. So this is the property that's identified in red. This is 30th Street, North 30th Street, as a point of reference, and you can see it's surrounded with IG, with IH, industrial heavy and commercial general zoning along 30th Street. So the request for alcoholic beverage sales is for a large venue, is for consumption on premise, and for package sales, consumption off premises. And the area within the site plan for the alcohol request, I've just kind of marked it up a little and zoomed in on it, but the area is broken into three areas on the overall site. So this is the boundary of the site itself. Area A is the existing building, which is the existing main brewery building. And then area B is the area that's outlined in orange. Area C is the area that's outlined in yellow. So the alcohol sales request is for two hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six square feet for area A. In area B, the request is for five hundred forty-eight thousand three hundred and nine square feet. For area C, the request is for one hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-four square feet. And that is a total sales area of nine hundred seventy-nine thousand and nine hundred sixty-six square feet overall. The site plan has noted that the hours of operation are consistent with Chapter 14. The site plan contains an alcoholic beverage schedule, which lists the uses allowed within the overall site. So the uses are permitted. The use within area A will remain the same, because that, of course, is the existing main brewery facility. But these areas, in area B and area C, the uses that are listed in the AB schedule allow the applicant to change those uses in the future, if needed, between those buildings. So the uses that are requested under the alcoholic beverage sales request are consistent with the rezoning request for hotel motel, restaurant, retail sales for specialty goods, private cultural facility, bar lounge, microbrewery, and heavy manufacturing uses. The site plan also notates that all permits that are issued after April 1st should keep on copy, should keep on sight a copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan. There are four waivers requested with this request. Three of the waivers are associated with Chapter 27, Section 132, the special use criteria. One is to reduce the distance separation from residential uses from two hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet. The second is to reduce the separation from other AB establishments, and that's from two hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet. The other is to allow the sales area to be located in a parking or loading area. The fourth waiver is to increase the number of temporary special events per year from four to twelve. Also, Council, within the staff report, on page three of the report, you'll find the staff findings from Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. We have requested changes to be made on the site plan between first and second reading. These changes have been provided to the applicant, and the applicant does agree to make the changes requested. You'll find, also within the staff report on page five, transportation planning finding. They have a finding of consistent, and they've requested a couple of revisions on the site plan, which are notes to be added between first and second reading. Also, you'll find code section 27-43, the definitions section, for reference and consideration. We've included all of the definitions for all of the sales proposed under the AB classification requested. And within the staff report, also included are the general standards and the special use criteria, regulations governing special uses. And I have a couple of pictures of the site. So this is the subject site. This is on 30th Street. Just a view of the site. And just to go back to the site plan currently, this is the only building that is built currently. Everything else is vacant on site. So all of this along 30th is vacant currently. That's another view, the northeast side along 30th Street. That's the southeast side of this property on 30th. That's the north end of the property. The building is sitting back, the existing building. And this is to the south of the property on 30th Street, the commercial business. And the DRC staff has reviewed the request and finds it inconsistent with applicable city of Tampa development regulations. And the, the changes are requested to be made on the site plan between first and second reading. I have a revised revision sheet that I'd like to submit into the record, and it has been provided to the applicant. And the applicant does agree, as I mentioned earlier, to make those changes between first and second reading. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions from the Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilmembers. My name is Leslie Hudock. I am with the law firm of Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, Florida. And this evening, I'm privileged to be here to represent the Yingling Brewing Company of Tampa in connection with a transformational project that they have planned to build a Yingling-branded and themed hospitality and lodging destination on their campus on North 30th Street, just south of Fowler Avenue. We have a giant and fantastic design and planning team. A lot of our members are here this evening. I just will mention briefly who they are. We're going to probably only have one or two folks speak, but I would like to introduce them just generally. We have representatives from Kinley Horn, who are doing our civil engineering, and we have certified arborists on, on board with them. We have Linkson Associates, who does the transportation engineering. We have Alfonso Architects, who are doing the, the architectural plans, obviously, and Alliant Partners, which, together with Capstone Development out of Washington DC, which is a national hotel developer, is serving as developer for the project. And so, before we get into the nitty-gritty of the plans, and we're going to kind of talk about, you know, both the rezoning and the, and the AB sales special use permit, I would like to ask Carlos Alfonso from Alliant Partners to come up and just give you a little bit of background about the Yingling Company, which is pretty remarkable, and some of the things that it has, has been doing in Tampa.
Good evening. Thank you, Leslie, and thank you for letting me come up and speak on this. So the Yingling Company has been a great corporate citizen of Tampa now for almost twenty years. They bought the old brewery on 30th Street that was originally a Schlitz Brewery when I was a child, and then, and then became Stro's Brewery. And when they shut down the Stro's Brewery, Yingling came in and actually rehired all the workers that had been laid off and, and brought that brewery back to life. Today, Yingling is run by Richard Yingling, Dick Yingling. He is the fifth Yingling to own the company. They're the largest craft brewer in the country. They're the sixth-largest brewer in the country. They are also the oldest brewer in the country. They started their company in 1829 in Pottsville, Pennsylvania, and they still brew out of a building that they started brewing in 1831. They have three breweries, this being the largest, and the other two are up in Pennsylvania. This brewery supplies all of their southeast market. It is a very robust enterprise for them. They employ eighty people in the brewery, and they have been, you know, contemplating this project to, to really solidify their standing in this community. They have taken a partnership and a sponsorship with the University of South Florida. They've been a very active community partner for us. With us today is their director of brewing, Jim Helpke, who has been with them for twenty years, from the plant. Jim, if you could stand up. And he is the, I mean, I'd love to have a director of brewing title. That's a great title. So I have been working with them for over a year on this project. They have been fantastic corporate citizens in every sense of the word. They always show up and, and just do great things for the community. So we consider, and, and as a Tampa citizen, I consider, but we consider this a catalyst project for this uptown area. The uptown area is now really getting a lot of attention. The constituents up there that are, that are vital and, and a partner to this project are the University of South Florida, Moffitt Cancer Center, the James A. Haley VA, Veterans Administration Hospital, Advent Health, the new university mall project that is under renovation. And all of this is coming around now at a time that is really very promising for this part of Tampa. And so, when we say this is a catalyst project, the Yinglings have made every commitment to, to follow up on that for this, for our city. So when we go and, and look at the, the site, plus, you're going to show some...
I'll show some pictures.
Great. So obviously, they're brewing there for the last twenty years. It's a very efficient brewery. What we're trying to do is create a campus environment with a hospitality component.
Let me, let me, before you get into that, let me just, just show you...
And maybe if you could state your name.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. For the record, Leslie Hudock.
Thank you, ma'am.
We want to just show you some pictures before we get into the, the concept. Here's a kind of the existing site, which is similar to what you saw from staff, but I think this gives you a perspective of the existing brewery, which is super important, and you're going to see more pictures of this in just a second, and also this giant empty space that's been vacant for so long. All right. Just a couple. Here's the, here's the front of the brewery, which will stay, industrial. Here's the goodies in the back, very industrial. Here's kind of where we're going with the front, with the grass in the front. Can that be made?
Scroll wheel. Let's see if we can see on top. Okay.
Oh, that. Oh, we wanna go the other direction. There we go, zoom it up. There you go. Oh, thank you so much. Okay, wanna describe what we're doing?
Sure. So this gives you an idea of the campus layout. So the intent is to highlight the brand, to service the partners that are in the general area, the uptown area, which includes Busch Gardens, which I didn't mention in my partners, but that's a very important component that takes place here. So we've got the VA Hospital, we've got Moffitt Cancer Center right next door on McKinley, we've got the University of South Florida and the VA Hospital. And so the meeting facility is, you know, designed to work in conjunction with a hotel. The hotel is a nationally branded hotel, a first-tier brand in the United States. It will be approximately 180 to 200 rooms, which is, you know, a sizable hotel. The thought is that that hotel will service that whole, this whole uptown area that's so, becoming so vibrant now. There's a restaurant function in there, which will add to the, you know, the offerings in the area, which are growing, hopefully, and so I think the restaurant, the high-end rest, it'll be a middle to high-end restaurant, and I think it'll be welcome in that market as well at this time. There is a tasting room and an outdoor, there's a tasting room there along with the restaurant, and then an outdoor beer garden there where Leslie's pointing to. So much of the site will be really polished and designed for the outdoors and for recreational use by the users outside. There's also a retail component on the, on, right, yeah, right here, which will have a museum and artifacts from the Yinglings' history, as well as retail sales at that point. So that'll be that half of the building. The total building, the reason that we're doing two, there are two separate ownerships. The hotel is one ownership, and the Yinglings own the rest of the campus. And so they have made this commitment as a company to this. There's also a nine pilot, a microbrewery, which is up in the, if you wanna show, up in the brewery area. So really, that's another activity node that will work in conjunction with the campus setting and provide, you know, a stroll in an area there, so. So that's really the existing project. As you can see, it's, we're saving, I'd say 70% of the trees. We're saving every grand oak, and we're saving most of the trees. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, Councilman Goode.
Where do we get the name of the uptown? Mr. Chairman, is that new? Uptown?
Yeah, that is. You know, I don't know who came up with that, but I've been, Bruno Mars?
It is uptown.
We gotta tell Bruno Mars that.
You got a Midtown, an uptown. I like it. I mean, we split that area. I mean, I always thought we could put some big football fields on that property out there.
So there is a very active association up there, the Innovation Partnership, and they have, you know, brought together all the constituents in that part of the city. And really, now they've got over 200 members in the Innovation Partnership, and that is the name given by that group to the part of town.
Thank you.
Nothing for anybody else? I got, nobody else? I got a quick question, if I may. With the extra parking, there appears to be about 80 extra spaces over what's required. Could you all just tell us what your rationale for that is?
This is, for the record, this is Leslie Hudock. I'd like to introduce Matt Famaal from Kimley Horn, if you don't mind. We've got a little bit of a gyration. We're trying to figure out how to do this hearing where we're combining them and we weren't quite organized. Thank you, Carlos. I'll let, I'll let Matt talk about just the specifics, and he can answer your specific questions about the technical things.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matt Famaal with Kimley Horn. I'm the engineer of record for the Yingling Development. So the site has been divided with two parking areas. There's a parking area on the north and a parking area on the south. The parking area in the north has been designed to accommodate the restaurant use, the office space, meetings, beer gardens. Parking lot on the south has been designed to accommodate the hotel. There's two access connections on 30th Street, which allows for access to the southern parking lot, and then also the northern parking lot. There's also interconnectivity between the site for vehicle access and pedestrian connectivity. When we designed the site and laid it out, you know, we laid it out to what we thought would accommodate a maximum gathering at the site, so there could potentially be tents and bands and other various activities throughout the site. So that's where we kinda came up with our parking ratio when we did those calculations.
Okay. Just an explanation for the community. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And speaking of, just, we were talking about the surrounding communities. Any outreach I see here? This is the Terrace Park Neighborhood Association. Any contact with the local neighborhood association at all?
Leslie Hudock. We have, we sent notices as required. We did not hear anything, any feedback whatsoever. We received a phone call from a neighboring apartment complex who wanted to know more, but we've heard nothing.
Oh, I'm sure. No, I was saying, actually, just due to the excitement, I think, of this project, this is a very vigorous project that I think's gonna, you know, outside of any legal issues we have here tonight, that we have to decide upon, and I think would really excite the community. So I would, I formally encourage everybody involved in this between first and second reading, or anytime soon thereafter, to contact the Terrace Park Neighborhood Association. Lesam Ramos is their president, and I would think they'd be delighted over this. So just keep them involved, because that's the neighborhood, and they, I think, would be very excited by this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else, counsel? Okay, if you're here to publicly comment on items number three and four, please come
Good evening, Councilman. Delighted to be here tonight. Eric Larson, 2138 University Square Mall, Tampa Innovation Partnership. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mark Sharp, who unfortunately had a calendar conflict and is away with his wife for their, celebrating their anniversary. But Mark has prepared a statement that he's asked me to read into the record, and as you might imagine, he expresses his strongest and utmost support for this exciting project. And again, we're glad to be before you once again. The Tampa Innovation Partnership is a 501(c)(6) organization with over 230 members, working together to create a place where people will want to live, work, and play. This project exemplifies exactly what we hope to accomplish in the district by creating an exciting venue for people to visit, engage, meet, and stay. My organization has visited the Yingling headquarters in Pottsville, Pennsylvania a number of times to get to know the family, learn more about their ideas for creating something special in Tampa. The Yinglings have reciprocated by sending, spending time with our community leaders, engaging the mayor and others, all while making it a priority to invest in our community. And this is best exemplified by renaming of the Sun Dome into the Yingling Center. That's just the start of their investment here. The Yinglings have, this project is another step in a lasting relationship with our community, and I believe one that will showcase just how wonderful the uptown district is to make a home. I urge you to unanimously support this project and join with the Yingling family to lift the university area into a place of pride for all. Mark sends his regards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, please.
Good evening. Eddie Burge, also speaking on behalf of the uptown Tampa Innovation Partnership, and as someone that works in the area up there every day. I don't wanna take a lot of time repeating what Mr. Alfonso said about the Yingling family's commitment to the area, or what Mr. Larson said on behalf of Mark Sharp, but I just do wanna point out that our advisory board of the Tampa Innovation Partnership, as Mr. Alfonso said, we have over 200 total members. It's over 230 total members, and our advisory board has adopted placemaking as one of its priority areas. And this project, I think, just will go such a long way to creating more of a sense of place in the area, a place to go, a place to meet, a place to strengthen bonds and community ties. And as an innovation district, this development will serve as a convergence point and a place for collaboration, and with the brilliant people that live and work and study in that area, you never know what kind of, like, outstanding ideas are gonna come out of it, and this is just really conducive to innovation in general. So I just wanna encourage you to support the items three and four tonight.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, please.
Good evening, Councilman. Christian Leon, I'm currently the Executive Director of the Cell that's based up in the uptown district. And I just wanted to stress three quick points. One is that I think this project is gonna offer a lot of jobs, both for students at USF and for residents in the area. I think that it's gonna be a big job creator for them. I think that it's a great amenity for tourists that come to visit Busch Gardens. I think it offers another thing for them to do in the area. And I think that, as you all know, there is a need for more and more venues for people that work in the area to go and kind of enjoy their time out there and spend some more time in that area. So I think because of those, it's an important project for the area.
And if I may, you're finished with your remarks? Okay, just, Cell, is that the university mall, the?
That is a 501(c)(3) that's gonna be focused on the neighborhood. So it's a community enrichment lab, and we're gonna be focused on taking all the technology that's done at uptown and in the research park, and having to benefit the community.
Okay, I got it confused with something else. Thank you, sir. Anybody else here to publicly comment? Okay, Councilman Niskalko, you said you wanted to say something, sir?
Sure. I remember back in 2011, I was at a candidate forum, and Dr. Genshaft over at USF, after all the candidates spoke, said, you know, "Please do something with this area," to all the candidates, not me. And, you know, "We need help up here." And it's very encouraging to see everything that's happening at University Square Mall, a project we approved at Busch and the interstate, now this. I mean, this is very exciting, and this will be the catalyst that is just going to propel this whole area forward, not just for USF students, but for, you know, everything north of Busch Boulevard, your district, which is so important. People go to Busch Gardens, and they see what they see as it is now, but that is soon to be changing, and it's really gonna be a whole destination for a lot of people. So I'm excited about this, and I'm excited to support this.
Anyone else? Just to put in my two cents, I concur with my friend and colleague, Councilman Niskalko. I think this is a tremendous project. I think it just, it speaks for itself. It's something that's very, very exciting, and it's really gonna complement the area well, I think. And I gotta just salute our friends over at Tampa Innovation for the long-time work and investment. I think that right now, with all the discussions we're having, and this gets to policy, this has no bearing, I say as a statement on the legal issues and my decision here today, but when you take a look at the different things that we're talking about with redevelopment and reinvestment in this area, with the project that we approved recently, the Councilman Niskalko talked about, this is really coming to fruition, a lot of the hard work that everybody, Eric, Eddie, Commissioner Sharp, and everybody, has been doing over at Tampa Innovation for so long. You take a look at all these projects, and they're all united by the fact that the horse whisper in all of them has been Mark Sharp. So just my hat is off to everybody in this, 'cause, you know, this is really the beginning, I think, of something really, really great, where things are really, really finally starting to take off in that area, where we have the local leadership that I think is gonna be cheerleading this effort, not just in word, but indeed in every way possible, and this is part of it. And I also see this project as the private sector saying, "Hey, listen, local government, we believe in what y'all are saying, so we're gonna put money in this area, because we believe that you are gonna match what private enterprise is doing in this area with infrastructure and public investment. So for y'all's step of faith, I salute you guys for that, and I mean that." So thank you. Last words? If there's any rebuttal, I guess after that. Lavage praise. Okay. We have a motion to close by.
No rebuttal.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion to close by Councilman Niskalko, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, sir?
For purposes of order, I ask that counsel take item four, which is the rezoning first.
Yes, sir.
And to remind counsel, as part of your motions, to include the revision sheet. You have the rezoning motions in front of you as one of the two sheets I distributed. This is a planned development rezoning, the second bullet point, or the fourth bullet point, depending on your direction to, on this petition.
Okay. Councilman Dingfelter, do you?
I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, not Dingfelter, I'm sorry, Citro. Long day, sir. I apologize. Councilman Citro, do you sure mind taking?
Not at all. Let's see if I can get through this real quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, on file number REZ 19-74. An ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance for rezoning property in the general vicinity of 11111 North 30th Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification IH heavy industrial to planned development PD, heavy manufacturing, microbrewery, restaurant, retail sales, specialty goods, private cultural facility, bar lounge, hotel motel, providing an effective date, as that the petitioner has met the burden of proof with competent and substantial evidence. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we're gonna ask for the site modifications between first and second reading. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda. Roll call, please.
Sir, this is first reading, no roll call required.
Excuse me. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Crew.
The motion carried, with Dingfelter being absent. Second reading and adoption will be on November 21st at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Okay, item number four. Councilman Miranda, do you sure mind?
Item number three.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It has been a long day for you, hasn't it?
And, again, Mr. Miranda, we have the alcoholic beverage motions there, and also there is a revision sheet that Ms. Doc did provide, and that's not being included. Thank you.
I misplaced my alcohol zoning note somewhere. Thank you very much. I got it. Thank you, Mr. Crew. Item number three, file number AB 2-19-20. Orders being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance approving a special use permit as to for alcohol beverage sales, large vineyard consumption on premise, and packet sales off premise consumption, and making lawful sale beverages regardless of alcohol, content, beer, wine, and liquor, and all forms from certain lot, plot, or tracks of land located 11111 North 30th Street, Tampa Farm, and more particularly described in Section 2, that all ordinance are part of ordinances in conflict or repeal, providing an effective date. And regarding the alcohol approval, the petitioner has met the burden of proof to provide competent and substantial evidence of special uses condition as shown on the site plan presented meets the general standards of Section 27-129, City of Tampa Code specifically saying that. Anything else?
To include the revision.
And include the revision sheet. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on November 21st at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we jump back to item number one.
Again, Mary Semenego, item number one on your agenda was REZ 1967. I handed out the revised staff report, and Kathy Beck was gonna address natural resources questions.
Good evening again, counsel. Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. Again, Natural Resources has found the subject rezoning with respect to landscaping, tree removal, site clearing, regulations of Chapter 27, consistent with minor modifications being made between the first and second reading. This is a revised staff report. I'd like to refer you to page five of your revised staff report, specifically number seven. If the site plan rezoning is approved this evening, thereby creating two buildable zoning lots, the following provisions shall apply to each zoning lot. In specific, it's the tree removal- In specific, it's the tree removal zone. Each lot would qualify for the tree removal zone, and any tree contained within the tree removal zone would be approved administratively. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Just, in fact, this has been, this has been a question of mine for a long time. We've already heard earlier today about the size maximum for lots as pertaining to the tree ordinance.
Yes, sir.
We have a lot that is hypothetically 100-foot frontage. That lot wants to be split into two. If we take that lot, split it into two, that one of those lots now meets the requirement for our tree ordinance.
That's correct, sir.
If someone is coming before us, prior to that lot being split, asking for a home to be built on each part of those lots, and there's a tree right in the middle of one of those proposed lots, does that lot have to be split before we can consider that part of the tree ordinance that we have now in removing that tree?
It would have to meet the tree removal zone criteria to be an eligible lot, which would be six...
Does that single lot first have to be split into two?
The 100-foot lot would not qualify.
So it then has to be split into two?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Applicant?
I did it.
Oh, yes, sir. Councilman Dinkfelder.
Ms. Beck.
And council, I apologize for being a little let us with my dad, who very happily celebrated
his 90th birthday a couple of weeks ago, so thank you for...
I told him that you had family obligations, so we all know about that.
Thank you for your accommodation. Not commendation, accommodation.
We got one for you.
That's next Thursday.
Okay.
Kathy, I requested this item be continued over to this meeting because we didn't have tree staff here, and I don't want to get into that, you know, it sounds like just a little bit of confusion.
Yes, sir.
But in regard to the tree itself...
Yes, sir.
One of the, couple of the questions I was asking last, two weeks ago, was, you know, what condition was the tree in? What was the wingspan of the tree, et cetera? And do you have any information on that?
I do, sir. I've got an evaluation from Natural Resources that was done. Reverified this week. The tree was rated a C9, which is a tree that has major problems and a relatively high risk. The mitigation in the current code would be 33 two-and-a-half-inch trees if approved, well, if it's removed. If the site plan zoning goes through this evening, would create two buildable lots.
So a C9 is effectively a hazardous tree?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
You've got specific details on the evaluation report of the tree.
Okay. What's wrong with the tree? Because last time, there was some indication, at least from the neighbors, that it was, you know, a healthy tree with big sprawling limbs.
It appears to be a healthy tree structurally. It's got some very significant decay at the base, some previous failures that have occurred in the tree, and some decay pockets in the crotch of the tree that are growing palm trees.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else?
Oh, and one other...
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, one other question. I don't know if this is a zoning question or a Kathy Beck question. So when you started out, you said, and you included in the staff report, that if approved, this would then fall into the TWZ-type situation. But I guess I was under the notion that they had asked for a waiver to include removal of the tree as part of the PD.
Your revised site plan has removed that waiver, sir.
I'm sorry?
Your revised staff report has removed that waiver request.
Has removed that waiver request?
Yes, sir.
I hadn't heard about that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilman Gudes.
Just for FYI, I see this evaluation report card you have here.
Yes, sir.
And I finally see what a C9 would be, you know, as relates to this case here, but I'm just wondering for future reference, when we have these situations, will these evaluations be attached? Because this is very helpful.
Yes, sir.
If we had this before, we would have known how to proceed, which I can pretty see the evaluation, A through F, I pretty much know what a C is.
Yes, sir.
So I think in the future, we need to include these.
They will be included, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, applicant?
Steve McElany, representing the petitioner. I hadn't planned to go through another whole presentation again unless that's what you would like, but I think the main thing is, you continue the hearing to hear from staff regarding the condition of the tree. They've indicated it's hazardous, and regardless of whether or not the rezoning went through, it would be approved for removal. And we would still be obligated to plant the replacement trees as an obligation currently in the code. And the second thing is that we are following the City of Tampa Code as it's currently established. We didn't ask for any exceptional consideration regarding that. And I would respectfully request that because the city staff has found it to be consistent, and the planning commission has found it to be consistent, and you've heard from Natural Resources, and they've indicated that it is consistent to move forward. So I would ask for your approval.
Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thank you, Ms. McElany. And you see, you know, you see why we needed the information, because now we know what the condition of the tree is, and I know I feel more comfortable in regard to the tree issue. The other question, and this is perhaps more of a good sport, good neighbor question to you, Stephen, I don't think your client is here, but maybe you might be able to speak for him. The prospective neighbor to the side of the construction requested about eliminating windows from that upper level that looked over his pool, and you said, "Well, that's really not possible because of the fire code," and I probably agree with that, although not being a fire expert or anything, but I have heard that provision. What I was wondering about was, is possibly using those glazed, the windows that have that sort of fogginess, you know, like a bathroom window sometimes has fogginess, where you, the light's going to come through, but you can't really see out of it.
The frosted windows?
The frosted windows, yeah, something like that. I'm probably not going to ask you to commit tonight because your client's not here, and that would be a little cumbersome, but I would just ask you and Mr. Mobley, if on behalf of that neighbor, assuming this goes through, that you, that y'all would consider something like that on the windows that overlook his pool.
Now, following our last hearing, I had asked him about using some screening landscaping on that rear side, like bamboo or something of that nature that grows very tall, and shit, you know, it'll block that view entirely within a few months. And he had no objection to that. I will certainly consider design and construction measures as well.
Possibly with the frosted windows?
Yeah, I mean, I can't tell that he will absolutely do that, but we will be sensitive to the question that was arisen, what was regarding looking over into the neighbor's backyard.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Is anyone here to publicly comment on item number one? If so, please come forward at this time.
If I can, if I could inquire, is everybody lining up people who are planning to speak on this item, item number one? Has anybody spoken before previously when it was last here?
I have.
And have you as well?
I have not.
You have not? And sir?
Yes, I have.
You have? Okay. This being a first public hearing, unless there's anything specifically and solely related to the new testimony of the staff, at a first reading, there is no opportunity to speak. If you wish to speak again, you'll have that opportunity at the second public reading, assuming it does go forward. But tonight, if you've previously spoken, unless there's something specific to what the testimony was tonight, you're not permitted to speak.
I have something specific to what...
Well, if you haven't spoken before, you're certainly allowed to speak and permitted to speak tonight.
Okay, so, Mr. Shelby, just to understand this, if individuals spoke at the first section of the first hearing, they may only speak again if they can specifically cite something that was cited today in support of their arguments?
Yes, which would be specifically perhaps the revised site plan with the condition of the tree.
Okay. Well, so that means, sir, you have to cite something that was said today in your, the substance of your remarks, if you wish to...
I can do that.
Okay, go forward, sir.
Bob Whitmore, 3111 Hawthorne Road, Tampa, Executive Director of City Tree Citizens Action Group. Everything I was going to say, I'm going to set aside because I respect Kathy Beck, and I respect the work that she's done for the city of Tampa, and I also respect what the council has done for the city of Tampa. Tree protection began in this room years ago, and now we talk about it every night when something like this comes up. The one thing that Kathy did talk about, I'm surprised that it became a C9 after Mr. Micklenicky and the residents of Bay Grove Beautiful had independent arborists say that it was a healthy tree. In fact, he based his entire line of speaking on the fact that he said that this was not a hazardous tree. I think what needs to go, can't go unsaid here, is we were all witness to a fast one. This lot was going to be split in two to make that tree fall into what needed to be the size of a lot to have a tree removed. And I don't think we can do that as we move forward as a city. These trees give us aesthetic value, they're a marketing value, they're scientific value, and if we allow real estate people to come in and start splitting lots, we're going to lose a lot of the things that make Tampa special. We are not a treeless city. We are one of America's tree cities, and people are watching us, and they're seeing what we do with our grand oaks. I respect Kathy's opinion. I will not fight against Kathy for any reason, and I thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your attention. My name is Barry Brindice. I live at 3113 West Oakeller Avenue. And I was unable to attend the last meeting, I had a medical emergency, but I'm happy to be here tonight. And I just, tree or no tree, I just want to point out, having lived on the street for over 20 years, I see lot after lot being subdivided. I see 3,000-plus square foot homes jammed into these rezoned subdivided lots. There is no room for the grand oaks that give our street and our neighborhood the character that makes it so unique and so valuable, and as to why I stayed for the 20 years that I have. And so I know there's further debate possibly on the health of the tree. I look at that tree every day. I walk by it. It looks really good to me. I'm not a qualified arborist, but I've seen a lot of trees in the neighborhood struck by lightning. I've seen a lot of trees in the neighborhood infiltrated by disease, and with a little bit of tender loving care, they can recover as well. So anyway, I'll just conclude by saying, I hope you please reconsider, tree or no tree, one house versus two. And I would also very briefly argue that when this lot was sold a year ago, the intended use, willing buyer, willing seller, $290,000 for this lot, to me implied they both expected they could only get one home in this space. There is a house or a lot for sale up the street, it's half the size of the subject lot, and the asking price is 80 to 90 percent. It's, they're asking, listed at $250,000 just a month ago, two months ago, whereas this lot, twice the size, just sold less than a year ago, or about a year ago, for $290,000. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Monica Tyler. I live just to the east of this lot, and the only thing I wanted to point out is, on that arborist's report, if you look at the notes on the last line, it does mention that this tree could be preserved, and I just want to take that into consideration. I did meet with the arborist yesterday. He was kind enough to knock on my door, walk me through the, what he found, and the two areas that he found at the base of the tree are maybe the size of my hand, and we're talking about, I mean, a pretty sizable oak tree. And there's nice curves where this very small sable palm has grown out of it. I do understand his points, but what I do want you, I do want to mention is that he did say that this could be preserved. It is in the center of the east lot, closest to me. It's not in the center of both lots. So you could truly build one beautiful house on the west side of these two lots and still keep this beautiful tree. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Next, please. Thank you.
My name is Gilman Tyler. I live at 3115 West Oakeller. I spoke last time, so I'll keep my comments very specific. First, I support the things that were said here by my wife and my neighbors. I appreciate them coming and speaking. But specifically, in regards to the windows that were mentioned by Mr. Dinkfelder and Mr. McElany, this is the diagram that was submitted with the PD. So this is in, this is in the paperwork that was submitted with the PD, and I would like to draw your attention to this elevation of this house as an example of what they may build. That's all I'm requesting. I want, I want the site, if they, if they are successful in removing this tree, which I hope they are not, and they build a house there, I'm asking for it to look just like what they presented right here. No, no windows in the back part of the house on my side facing my pool. That's all I'm asking for, and for you to save the tree, please. If one house is built, everybody still wins. Everybody still makes money. The guy selling the lot makes money, the developer makes money, and we're happy that we save a tree. Keep everybody happy. Save a tree. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cynthia Duncan, 4205 West Barcelona Street, Tampa, Florida. I have been sworn, please put me on notice for any subsequent actions on this res. A picture tells a thousand words. So last time I was here, I wasn't prepared to defend the removal of the tree because I thought, "This is obvious. This is a slam dunk. This is a sure thing." I spoke to Natural Resources. They're like, "This tree is in the wrong place. It's going to come out." I don't think that the condition of the tree is actually relevant in this case, even if this were the healthiest tree you've ever seen. And I take it very seriously before I come before council. I don't want to waste your time. Mr. Tyler contacted me. I said, "Oh, a four-foot diameter tree near the middle of the lot, that's going to be a long shot." I drove to the lot. I looked at the tree. I'm like, "Yeah, it's in the middle of the lot. It's huge. I don't see how you could build a house." I then pulled the Excel documents, the boundary, everything. This is a to-scale drawing from the, from the survey and of the tree, and actually, the original survey had the tree at a 91-foot diameter. The new survey shows it at 97 and a half, 95 to 100 feet. So that's the shape of that canopy. That's how far the limbs go out, okay? And even if Natural Resources could, and they didn't have to do it in this case, if they could shrink that barricade from the 20 feet to 10 feet by root pruning and alternate construction methods, and they could prune some of the branches and get closer, you see this canopy's smaller. It's closer, the base is closer. This is best-case scenario, how close you could probably get to this tree. Then to build a house, you're still going to lose all of the square footage you see in the yellow, because you can't build there, the tree's there. If you built one big house, they would lose, by my calculations, 30 to 50 percent of the house. They'd still have to shrink the house after they did all the other methods that can be used to save a tree. So you tell me, is that reasonable to require a property owner to shrink the house that they could build by 30 to 50 percent? It's your decision what that number is, but these things going forward need to have some consistency, and we need to look at them carefully. And I've offered Ms. Kurt, Ms. Beck, you know, be happy to come and give the new council members the briefing that we gave the council members last year. I've got my little blocks, my little plastic trees, but I really think a picture, this is, this is what it looks like. The tree is massive, and it's near the middle of the lot. So regardless of the condition, there is no reasonable reconfiguration of this lot that would save that tree. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here for public comment on item number one? Okay. Rebecca, or Ms. Kurt?
Thank you, Council. Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. I just want to clarify for the record, because I know that we're just starting to see these TRZ-owned lots, and I just want to clarify that because when this lot is split, those lots will be TRZ-eligible, they are not going to need a waiver from the tree provision. And I also want to just clarify for the record that although you have a report from staff that the tree is a C9... that the tree is a C9, which by definition is hazardous, it's not officially at this point deemed hazardous because that is a notice to hearing process and it hasn't been through that. So you certainly have the evidence that the, that the tree is in hazardous condition under our code, but it's not a formal determination at this point. But that being said, they do not need a, they do not need a waiver from the tree provision because these lots, when split, will become TRZs, and therefore, no waiver is required.
Councilman Gudis.
What was that part? Notice to hearing, what was that?
When a tree is deemed hazardous, there's a process that is going to, that has to be gone through. And the, under the ordinance, the prior city council determined that they didn't want that to be purely administrative. It's administrative, but it's administrative with notice to the public so they can seek review. And so, just in the event that this case was challenged, I just want to make it clear that the city council isn't basing this motion based upon the fact that the tree is deemed hazardous and can come out because it's hazardous. Because although we have evidence that it could qualify for that, there hasn't been a final determination on that.
Councilman Dingfelder.
I want to ask this question to Rebecca, you, or staff.
No, is it all? Okay, thank you. We've got a, we've got a tree that, that's been determined to be, was it C9? They could apply for it to be taken out and it'd have to be noticed, that sort of thing. The, so we, now we go back to the original issue, okay, which is, you know, everybody likes to call it a lot split, but it appears to me, these are lots, these were original lots of record when, when these, when this block was platted, lots 23 and 24. Is that correct?
That is the evidence that's been presented to you, yes. They're original platted lots. That's in the record.
Is it more than evidence? I mean, is it a matter of city? Is this?
I try not to testify, but yes, the staff report has indicated that these are original platted lots.
Okay. So, but the city's considering these lots of record?
Yes. These are, by definition, lots of record.
Okay. And then, I just want to clarify what we heard last week before we got way off into the tree discussion, is that these lots are, are 90 feet deep. Maybe I'll ask staff, probably better. If you want to, just, just to clarify the staff report, Mary, is this your case?
Mary Samaniego for the record.
Okay. These lots are 90 feet deep.
Correct.
And, and I, I think, I don't know, did staff do an analysis of, of the other lots up and down the street in terms of, is, are all the lots 90 feet deep?
No, sir. We only do the analysis, the conforming analysis for lot widths. So these lots are 50-foot wide lots, and it's in the RS50 zoning district. So they're not asking for a leaf for the lot width, just the depth.
Right. Okay. So I, I could have sworn I heard perhaps Mr. Mickelini put it on as evidence that, that the rest of the lots up and down the same block were 90 feet deep.
They, they are, sir. That's how I was, these are platted lots. Everything in this block were platted as 90-foot deep lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Rebecca, Mr. Mickelini.
Yes, Council. I was the one that put that information on the record, and then it was confirmed by city staff that the lots are platted at 90 feet, and that's what's, that's what's causing a lot of these problems. I have a, I have a partial view of, of the plat, which shows that the, can you see that all right? Which shows them at 90 feet in depth, 90.74 feet. And except for the corner lots, the rest of them are 50 feet wide. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, without going in the direction that we're going in, you wouldn't be able to even meet the RS50 standards because you don't meet the 50 feet, I mean, the, the 90 feet. You'd have to have 100 feet and 5,000 square feet, and you can't meet that. We also did, we also did an analysis that showed the development pattern. Oh, let me get this. That most of the, most of the properties are developed at the 50 feet. If I could find it here. All of those marked out in red are 50 feet. So anyway, we're, our attempt is to restore what was originally there. We, the addresses were existing, so you mean, I don't know what else we can do. The staff has told you that we couldn't save them. It's, it's fighting a losing battle, and we're much better putting in new trees that are appropriately placed instead of trying to save a tree that is already deteriorated. We've had one of the diagrams drawn for you. That shows, this is the, this is the west lot. This is the west lot, and it's showing you the extent of the limb spread. And this is the east lot with the tree in the middle of the lot. And then, this is a photograph with the lot line showing between the east, this is the east lot on the right, and then the west lot on the left. It shows you the same, same things that I just showed you in the diagram. I think the best thing I can tell you is that in this case, the, after development condition is far better than the existing condition. And we followed the city of Tampa code. We followed what was outlined in the ordinance. We didn't ask for, as I said earlier, we didn't ask for any extraordinary consideration. The tree is not in, in good shape. And if you did try to save it and it's in a deteriorated condition, and we've moved a house or we've done some other things, then we're, we're ending up with a relocated house and a declining tree. So it, we're really between a rock and a hard place about what to do. So we're respectfully requesting your approval. As I said, the planning commission had no objections and found it consistent. City staff had no objections and found it consistent. And you've heard from Natural Resources saying that they would approve the removal of that tree. And it isn't a deteriorated hazardous condition. We, obviously, according to the staff, we'd have to go through another process for the formal determination of that, but it could be removed, and the waiver has been removed from our site plan, so we no longer have to ask for that waiver from city council. So anyway, I would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to close with a motion by Councilman Gudis, I believe, the second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Councilman Carlson, do you, sir, feel comfortable taking item number one? I'm sorry, what? Okay. Councilman Dingfelder, do you, sir, feel comfortable taking that?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Dingfelder, there is a substitute ordinance. I believe it's a change in the legal description or correction of a legal description. Is that correct? It's been filed and it's on your agenda.
All right. Do we need any special language?
The rezoning motions?
All right. Thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, it's just you were next in line, my friend.
All right, let me, let me, let me explain where I'm coming from, and then I'm going to read it for approval. The, obviously, two weeks ago, I was very concerned about this tree. I was ready to vote no for a variety of reasons, mainly surrounding the tree. But the tree has been pulled off of the PD. Mr. Mickelini, you there for a reason, or?
Will the staff remove the waiver? We didn't ask them.
No, no, I'm not asking the question. I was just, I didn't know what, I didn't know if you were there for a reason. I was just making.
Oh, I, I guess his comments, you may sit.
I'm just waiting for you to finish your vote. You want me to sit down?
No, I, I didn't know, I didn't know if you were asking us something or something like that.
No, we closed. We closed.
No, you closed the hearing. I'm just waiting for you to finish your deliberation.
All right. So anyway, I was, I was prepared to support the tree, support the neighborhood. I felt that this was a tree that perhaps could be worked around, but we didn't have enough information. So now we've got plenty of information, in addition to the fact that the petitioner, who has the discretion to do that, has pulled the tree off of the PD, therefore making the tree, to a certain degree, I guess, irrelevant. But regardless, staff has told us the tree is a C9, and therefore, even if we didn't approve this, they could post tomorrow and, and seek to have it removed, and they'd probably be successful, in my humble opinion. Other than that, then we get down to the, sort of the key, the more crucial zoning question, which is, if they have two lots of record, which they do, and if both those lots of record are 90 feet deep by 50 feet wide, which appears to be what all the other 10, 10 homes or 10, 10 neighbors have the same sized lots, then I, I don't know how we can deny this. And I, and I apologize to the neighborhood for that, but I think we're truly between that proverbial rock and a hard place. With that said, I'll move to approve the substitute ordinance and substitute site plan for RAZ 19-67, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3123 and 3125 West Oak Keller Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and were particularly described in section one, from zoning district classifications RS50 residential, single-family to PD plan development residential, single-family detached, providing effective date, and specifically that the, in moving that, I believe the petitioner has met its burden of proof, providing competent substantial evidence that the, the development as condition and shown on the site plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and city code.
Sir, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder. A second by, yes, sir?
I just want to be clear. I believe it's just a substitute ordinance. The site plan has not been substituted.
No substitute?
No, it's, the site plan is the original site plan. That is correct.
Okay. My mistake.
Then that's fine.
A second by Councilman Escako.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion, the motion carried with Carlson voting no. Second reading and adoption will be on November 21st at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we move to item number two.
Mary Samaniego, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Item number two is another continued item from your last public hearing. On October 10th, you requested additional information from the city arborists. I do have a revised staff report. The site plan has not changed. A revised staff report with additional informations from Natural Resources.
Good evening, Council. Kathy Beck, Natural Resources Coordinator. And for Councilman Gudis, we have an evaluation for. I apologize. Staff has submitted a revised report to provide you the criteria for grand tree removal of a non, non-hazardous grand tree. This particular grand tree is a B8, which is a non-hazardous tree and requires a waiver for approval. What we've done for you on page three of your revised staff report is provide you the criteria and conditions that need to be reviewed for reasonable reconfiguration of the site. And at the bottom of page three, we have provided you staff's observations of the site plan for reasonable reconfiguration, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilman Gudis?
And thank you for the evaluation, Sees.
You're very welcome.
As I look at it, let me, I got a clear understanding. So my condition is a B, so that's a fairly grade three, is a condition tree.
Yes, sir.
But when I go to this risk hazard, and I have an A, is that limbs? Is that the bulk of the tree saying is, is?
If you look on the back of the evaluation, the risk is determined based on the size of the failure that could potentially occur with the tree. And it's eight out of 12. The highest points would be 12. This is about moderate. B, minor problems with the tree. We don't feel that the, the risk is high.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. Yeah, this is very helpful, Kathy.
Thank you.
So tell us, failure potential seems pretty straightforward. Size of defect seems pretty straightforward. Target rating, target rating rates the use and occupancy of the area. The current, is that the current use or the proposed use?
It could be any use on the property. With this, in this particular case, it would be a constant use for a proposed development.
Okay. But when you walk up and see this tree in its current state, I imagine this lot has never been developed.
I believe it had been.
It had been developed?
Yes, sir. There had been a structure on the lot before.
Okay. I guess I'll get the, the petitioner to speak to that. But let me just back up and generalize then. If there had been no development and you walk up and you see a tree, how do you come up with?
A four?
With, no. How do you come up with any target rating?
If it was a vacant lot, there wouldn't be.
Is the target rating meant to be, what is the proposed use? Is that the target rating for the proposed use?
Not, not necessarily. If it was a vacant lot and it had never been used, or if it wasn't near a sidewalk or a public right of way, it, there would not be a target. So the target rating would be low.
Okay. So in this case, you think that it's a four because, because it had been?
It had been occupied previously, that there'd been a structure on it previously.
Well, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, another, one other last question. How far is it from the, from the tree to the, to the proposed building? I, I can't.
It's in the center of the parking lot. I believe you've got the information on the site plan. I do not have it here. It's, it meets the protective, it would not meet the protective radius. This tree has a very large canopy, and any pruning within 20 feet, which I believe the evaluation speaks to, would require excessive pruning of the tree.
Right. I understand. I read that, too. I was just wondering, what is the distance between, between the tree and the, and the proposed building?
Let's see if that.
I would say maybe eight feet.
Eight? Well, no, because that's about 12 feet. That's about five feet, maybe, maybe 14, 15 feet. And I'm doing that, looking at the site plan with a, out of scale.
Okay. And, and it looks like you've provided us some conceptual plan, plan or?
The petitioner had provided, reasonable reconfiguration includes the criteria outlined in your staff report. And the, the particular, this particular tree in relation to the site plan is located in the drive aisle of the, and interferes with the ADA space. And the, the conceptual plans that were provided in the application, I'll have to have the petitioner speak to why that couldn't happen.
Yeah, because I do see one that, one attached to the last page, it's on the back of the, of the staff report. Shows a notched building to, it looks like a notch building specifically to accommodate the tree at, at 2,591 square feet, I guess, as compared to a larger building that they're proposing. So, did, did staff evaluate that conceptual site plan?
Yes, sir. We've evaluated, we evaluated all the site plans, and our responses are in bold on page three and four of your staff reports.
And what, what did you guys say about that, that particular conceptual plan where they notched the building?
We basically respond to what's been. We basically respond to what's been proposed, and
Right. That's what I'm saying. There's, that's a proposal, isn't it?
No, no, sir, the proposal is before you this evening, the site plan that they're proposing, and that's the one that we responded to. These, the petitioner would have to explain to you why they couldn't do them.
So what's the, what's the point of them submitting the conceptual site plan, then?
They submitted them, I guess, to
I mean, if we're not reviewing?
Mr. Brickelmeier, Mr. Brickelmeier will have to explain that to you.
Is it, well, I'm just trying to understand the staff review.
Part of, part of the reasonable reconfiguration, what else could you do to save the tree? And I guess these were unacceptable to the applicant.
But
Is all I can assume.
Okay. But looking at this now, could this have been acceptable to staff?
Yes.
As an alternative?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you, Ms.
Yes, sir, anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Applicants, for me?
Good evening, Clayton Brickelmeier, Brickelmeier Law Group. I'm actually not really sure where to start. I'll just sum up, and then I imagine Councilman Dingfelder will have questions. If you put, I brought, I brought this exhibit, which I thought was helpful. That's the protective radius under our current proposed plan. And it shows that if you, if you reconfigure, and you can see the other reconfigurations, you're pointing out that one reconfiguration. That is a 20% reduction in building size. That is a, another few parking spaces gone. And you're still building, you're going to have to prune the tree significantly to get that building to fit underneath. You'll probably have to pull at the, the roof. And you've got parking lot paved over the top. What's going to happen there is you're going to end up creating a hazardous tree through the construction process, and there's just no way to avoid it. As a result, what we came up with was what you have proposed in front of you, that tree cuts off most of the use of the back half of the property, and that's just the way it is. It's not a, it is, it is a B. It's not an A. And there is, as you know, fairly significant mitigation required. I think I heard Mr. Miccolini say, let's plant some new trees in usable spaces that can grow up and be nice big pretty trees, and let this one go by the wayside so that we can bring some development. The previous, this site was developed, it had two old homes on it, that the first thing I did was shepherd through code enforcement to make sure that they were demolished. So we have a doctor who would like to open a practice, who has spent a lot of time and money and effort to come up with this plan, that I think meets the reasonable configuration standards that are in the code, because we're beyond reasonable configurations. That is obviously my opinion. I would ask for you all to back me up on it.
Anything else, sir?
Just available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Councilman Niskakko?
As you're showing that Martin Luther King is towards the bottom, right? The tree is closer to the front, or is it deeper in the back?
This is Martin Luther King, yes. So the tree's closer to the back.
And that was obviously in between the two houses that were there before you demolished?
It was, it was sitting right between, it was actually, the limbs were on top of the, the roots.
And how deep is this lot? This is, is that the property line right there at the end, or?
Oh, I have a survey in my stack.
It looks like it's more in the middle, and not so, you know, as far back as it appears. It looks like it's more in the middle of?
It is, it is quite central, unfortunately, for it.
And it spans out?
It obviously grew up there as a result of it being two structures, which that site no longer wants to be. I feel David moving around behind me. The distance on this is 130 feet.
Okay. So it's, I mean?
And the canopy of this tree stretches all the way from boundary to boundary east to west.
So really, what can you do, is the question?
That is
I mean, you're stuck with, with, just because of how this tree is. So, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brickelmeier.
Right.
Ms. Shelby, would you hand, hand this to staff on, it's the last page of the staff report?
Which staff member, please? Mary?
Anybody who'll put it up on the
Oh, he's putting it up on the overhead?
Yep. Maybe, maybe Ms. Beck could come back. Ms. Beck, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So earlier, and, and Mr. Niskakko, this speaks to your, your comments specifically. You asked them if there's nothing else they could do. Well, they drew this picture, the one that's up on the onus, as, as a, as a possibility. Now, I think the building they're applying for is of 3,000 square feet with the notch out of it. It comes down to 2,500 square feet, but it does save this grand tree.
Yes, sir.
The, now, just for clarification, because there was confusion at the last hearing as well, this does not fall into that tree removal zone.
That's correct.
At all?
No, sir.
Why?
It's too large of a site.
The lot's too big?
Yes, sir.
So that's not an issue either?
That's correct.
Okay. So, legal staff, thank you, Kathy Beck. So, so now, if that's not a TRZ issue, then what is our standard in terms of making the decision about alternatives, you know, reasonable alternatives to save the tree? This is not a new discussion. This is a discussion that's been going on for 20 years. Maybe it's a discussion that led up a little bit in recent years, but it, I think it's an important discussion.
Yes, Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. If you will look on page three and then four of your staff report, the reasonable reconfiguration review, that is providing what the standards are. So you're supposed to look at the impact of the proposed building's structure on the impacted tree, and to see whether or not it's going to affect the tree, whether the proposed building or structure can be reasonably reconfigured, and I'll get back to that one in a minute, whether the reduction of required setbacks for the primary building structure will allow the relocation of the building or structure, whether there are alternative construction methods that can be used, and then the cost of utilizing those construction methods balanced with the health of the tree. So that's what you're supposed to be focusing on. And as far as reasonable reconfiguration, this code expressly provides some of the things that are not reasonable. That's my note. You cannot require that the structure is adjusted more than allowed by a design exception. You cannot require there to be a change in the number of stories or the height of the structure that has increased any more than a design exception, and that the internal flow or function of the structure is not adversely altered by the reconfiguration. So they're proposing the structure. It is not a reasonable reconfiguration to shrink the structure. You can ask them to move the structure as much as allowed by code administrative design exceptions. So you can't require them to get a variance or, or something else. It is, the code really limits what's reasonable reconstruction and tells you what that is. And if that is not met, then it's not reasonable reconfiguration, and, and the tree comes out.
So the new code?
The new code, yes.
The new code, because I don't believe that's what, the way the old code was.
That is not how the old code was.
Okay, so now this new code basically says a developer can come in and put the maximum size of building that they want to, and then if that happens to interfere with the tree, then, then we're left with these other issues. But we can't suggest or impose on the, on them to shrink down that building a little bit to accommodate the tree.
No, you can look at reasonable reconfiguration of what they're proposing, and you can look at whether there are alternative construction methods, and whether the cost of those methods, how that compares in balancing that with the health of the tree. So if you had very inexpensive construction methods and a very unhealthy tree, then probably you would want them to do the alternative construction methods if they were very expensive and it was a very poor tree, then probably the tree would need to come out.
Thank you.
Councilman Gudis?
Man, these trees are giving me a headache, man. I tell you, man. This is ridiculous, man. These trees, man. Oh, yeah, really, okay. Now, staff has come up with a conceptual site. Am I correct?
No, I believe that that was submitted by, by the applicant.
By the applicant.
The applicant is required as part of the process to try to show that they looked at alternative designs and that they wouldn't work. That's the process as envisioned. I -
But what's the point?
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. If anybody's here for public comment for item number two, please come forward at this time.
Bob Whitmore, 3111 Hawthorne Road, Executive Director of City Tree, the Citizens Action Group. I'll sit down and shut up for a C9, but I won't stay quiet for a B. This tree needs to stay because it's healthy, and it's one of the trees that city councils before you and city fathers and founders of this city saw fit to protect. There's a reason we do it. You know, it's like, these trees are giving me a headache. These trees define us. They are marketing tools. They are the things that people look at when they fly into Tampa, and they say, look at all the trees. We are a tree city for a reason. We are seen as an urban forest by other cities all around the United States who are looking at us and how do we protect our trees? This isn't, I'm not a tree hugger. It's a, that's a derogatory statement. That's, don't call me a tree hugger. I am a citizen who believes that trees define us. They are marketing tools, and they make Tampa what they are. And if we just say we will go ahead and we will pave over these trees whenever we see fit, just because there's dirt there, and a buildable lot is a buildable lot because it's got dirt and I can put a foundation down on it? I don't care if there's a tree there. I say it is not a buildable lot if there's a protected tree on it. Zero. No tolerance for making something that's got a protected tree on it a buildable lot. The people in question, the builders in questions have a reconfiguration that Kathy Beck, who I already said I respect immensely for the work that she's done to save trees, says that she thinks that perhaps this might be a solution. I would ask the council to do what they do when they have a question that they can't agree on, and they ask for more information. It's only one tree. Then one tree, then another tree, then another tree, and before you know it, we've got no grand oaks. Sure, we can plant little trees and wait 90 years until my daughter and my granddaughter can see grand oaks again. Grand oaks define Tampa. They are something that people know us about, know about us. It's a marketing tool. It's important to us. So I'm not here to get in the way of commerce, and I'm not here to stop builders. My dad was a builder. I'm here to protect what Tampa has, and Tampa has grand oaks. We saw fit to protect them. If the new rules say that we can mow them down, then the new fight starts right here at this podium. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Cynthia Duncan, 4205 West Barcelona Street, Tampa, Florida. I have been sworn. So reasonable reconfiguration, you guys have a toolbox full of things. Natural Resources has a toolbox, the city has a toolbox of things we can do to try to save trees. The tree removal zone, those are little lots, the trees in the middle can't be saved. But for the bigger lots where you have room to maneuver, we created this administrative setbacks to save trees. So that, to me, is your biggest tool that you have. So you can prune the roots and get closer. You can move that 20-foot barricade closer to the tree. That helps you with the foundation. Natural Resources will tell us, can you prune the limbs? How much, without killing the tree? Can you utilize alternate construction methods that are reasonable, you know, cost-wise? And so Natural Resources will tell us that. Then you look at shifting the house, or reconfiguring the house. This is one example of where you could actually maybe save a tree. So if the tree was in the corner, you can save those trees, because this yellow represents the administrative setbacks that we give to trees. You can now go further in the front, gain some square footage. Go further in the back, gain some square footage. You can go a little bit on the sides and say, get extra square footage. So in this scenario, for this 75-by-100-foot lot, there's 928 square feet available of additional space if you expand into the backyard, the front yard, the small amount allowed, to save a grand or specimen tree only. So the question becomes, after you've done all the tools in your toolbox, and you've expanded that building, you see this house is now L-shaped, because you had to notch out the corner to save that tree. Every lot is unique, every tree is unique. That's why Natural Resources has to tell us, you know, if there's a giant limb coming off this tree over here, forget it. That's not going to work, right? Because you're not going to be able to build a building over there. And they say you can't prune it. So like I said, after you've applied all your tools, and you've expanded into the setbacks, the only thing left to do is shrink the building. Now, you guys need to decide how much shrinkage, after you've applied, you've tried all the tricks and tools you can to save that tree, and the only thing left that will save it is shrink in that building, how much is reasonable. I don't envy you, you're making that decision, but it, after everything, you've done everything else. That's kind of what it comes down to. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Gudis had a question, I believe.
Ms. Beck?
Ms. Beck, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Councilman Gudis?
Have you, have you met with the petitioner, Mr. Brickelmeier, in reference to how we can make this work, or how it can work?
I personally have not, sir, no. I would have to ask staff. Have you met? Just during the DRC.
Well, I mean, you know, when you hear everything, I always say we, you know, don't say what we can, but what, what can we do? And I think sometimes we have to, you know, compromise or try to make a deal work. And this, this one here is kind of tough here. So that's why I asked, had you, had he met with Natural Resources or staff to see how we can make this work? Sometimes decisions are hard, and sometimes we need to talk about things. So I'm hoping that Mr. Brickelmeier will consider maybe talking this over to see how we can make this work before a decision has to be rendered. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for getting that. But Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, I wanted to clarify the discussion that we were having earlier, and say, the code does allow you to do the placement orientation, and it does allow you to deny this on the structure size if they can't alter it, but not to the extent that it, it, that it interrupts or the internal flow or function of the structure. It cannot be adversely affected by the size. So I wanted to clarify that, because I think I might have left a misconception when I spoke earlier.
Internal flow or the?
Function. You can also can't make them take it down a story, but that's not the case here, so I wasn't going to hit on that one. But basically, the size can be changed, but it can't be changed such that it adversely affects the internal flow or function of the structure.
Okay. Any further questions before we go to rebuttal? Okay, rebuttal?
Risk of making this worse. This is the tree. This is from our report, our arborist did. I have a really, really pretty tree that I would say is an A0 in my yard at home, that I spend a lot of money and effort taking care of. This ain't that tree. I understand that it's a B8. I don't think, we were never disputing that it's not, it doesn't qualify, that it's not at 35 inches or whatever the required number is. The FAR allowable in R01, which is our current zoning district, is a 1. We are proposing a .24 with this building. We are not maxing anything out, and I, I mean, maybe we should have shown up with a first plan that just completely paved over the whole thing and like went to the setbacks. We didn't do that. This is the result of compromise. I, I, we have met with Natural Resources. I know Mr. Bell talked to Natural Resources, I think, yesterday. We have done the work. This is a compromise that you're looking at. That tree is going to be, it will be impacted by any design we do. The canopy is the entirety of the lot. We can't go up, we can't change the notching. All we can do, and it's correct, is shrink. But you were going to shrink it beyond what you even see in your staff report to make this actually work and to get everybody happy. And it is, it's already at a .24. It's just not a feasible project anymore. It's just not a feasible project anymore. You know, we can't just put up a, a food truck, which is what you're leaving us with. Or a park, I guess, if you guys want to buy it, I'm sure I can pass something along. But we, we're asking for a point-two-four, which is a seventy-five percent reduction in maximum FAR. The answer to the criteria and the reasonable configuration are all no. There are no design exceptions that help us get there. We can't change the height. We're already at the lowest height we can manage. The flow and function requires that we have a parking lot that, that works and can park enough cars that we can have people come in the door. And it has to be big enough to be a viable thing. We're asking for three thousand feet. This is not a giant building. That's all I have. I'm, I'm available for questions. I hope that y'all see fit to let us do this project.
Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Brickelmeier, do you have that drawing that you, that you, your client or Landmark drew that was up there before?
Which one?
The conceptual, the conceptual.
Somebody's still...
The one with the notch?
Hang on.
Rebecca, thank you for the clarification.
I believe you were going to mean this one.
Okay, pullback. There you go. All right. Where is the street?
That, that would be, the trees here, Marley, the King is there.
Okay, so your, so your initial egress and ingress is fine and unchanged?
Correct.
Okay. And, and how many parking spaces are you showing here compared to the site plan that you prefer?
I believe that's, I think I counted fourteen.
And where's your handicap?
It looks like it's there.
Okay, so, it appears to me, do you have an engineer with you? Okay. It's better to have engineers testify than, than lawyers. Being a lawyer, I can say that. So you, you, I assume you drew this as a possibility?
Yes, we drew this, just going back, again, David Bell.
Your name, I'm sorry.
David Bell, Landmark Engineering, eighty-five fifteen Palm River Road, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-one-nine. This was a plan that was drawn, my clients, my client bought this land thinking there's doctor's offices all around it, there's retail on the east side, there's doctor's offices down the street. He purchased the land and wanted to develop on it. We brought to the city's attention, under the old tree code, in two thousand and eighteen, we had a tree survey done and the tree analysis. We came up with some, some conceptual site plans to discuss with Natural Resource staff at that time and determined, you know, what could or could not be done. There are major limb structures on this tree, and even this site, although it may be doable, is going to impact the tree in one way or another. It also does not provide the necessary three thousand square feet my client needs for his, his practice. If he can't get the room to, to see patients, this is not a viable solution. And then really, there's, there's not many other options. All the other buildings, east and west, they're all zero lot setbacks on the property line and on the alley to the rear, all the parking's in front. This site plan, yes, does meet the planning commission's requirement of wanting the, the building up front, but it doesn't meet the size requirement. So we can't go up. If we kept this, this plan, trying to get three thousand, we wouldn't be able to add a second story to get the additional square footage because the limb structures of the tree, the tree just spreads over the entire southern two-thirds of the site. It has a hundred-foot-wide limb structure. It's just in the wrong spot. If it was in any other spot on this site, we probably could work with it, but it is in the middle of the site.
So you're testifying that even though that, that twenty-foot radius is satisfied by this drawing, that the tree still, what, hits the side of the building?
I, I have not done that model, but it, it would be very close to hitting it, and we can't go two stories to get the additional square footage that is needed. What is there, what was there before the houses were removed were two very small, small houses that were dilapidated and vacant because they were the only residential houses in the, in the neighborhood on this side of the road. Everything else is commercial. It was zoned R-oh-one, and nothing's been built on it because of, of this tree.
And is your client here tonight, the doctor?
No, sir.
Because you're, you're testifying that the doctor can't live with twenty-five-hundred...
That is...
...ninety-one square feet.
When we worked on this site plan in two thousand and eighteen, we provided it. He needed three thousand, and that's what was, that was what was drawn. And if I could get the three thousand by going up, you know, but you can't just build a two-story on just one little section of the building. The whole, you, the building just won't, you can't do a two-story building here.
No, you'd probably have to put parking underneath.
No, the tree limbs.
No, no, no. I'm saying if you, if you pushed it, the whole thing toward the street, drove underneath as you come in from the street, and, I mean, I, that does sound a little more than the doctor was probably aiming for, I guess.
I mean, that's a very extreme, and I don't even think you could do that.
I'm actually agreeing with you on this one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I did, I never did hear how many parking spaces is in the final plan.
Eighteen required, and we are providing sixteen.
You're doing sixteen, and this was fourteen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anything further? Okay. May I have a motion to close?
Thank you.
Motion to close by Councilman, and it's counsel, a second by Councilman Goodes. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Warren, I'm number two. Councilman Goodes, are you comfortable taking this one, sir? And, and, and just for clarification for new council members, because I was very confused by this the first couple of months I had, if I, if the chair asks you to read something and you are voting no, then you can, you may say, "I, I am, I am not comfortable taking this." That's all, just for future reference, but if you are, then you may read.
Mr. Chairman, just for the purposes, I know that we had one of the petitioner's witnesses give the last comments, but I'm wondering if Mr. Brickelmeier needed the, anything else to, he said further?
No.
He says no, so there's no need to reopen the hearing.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right, sir. Order's being presented for, uh, I'm sorry, my number two, two, two. All right. File number REZ nineteen-seven-six. Order's been presented for first reading consideration in ordinance rezoning property in the vicinity of seven-ten and seven-twelve West Starland King Jr. Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more quickly are described in section one from zoning district classification R-oh-one residential office to PD Plan Development Medical Office and Business Professional Office providing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Goodes, a second by, yes, sir.
Just a quick comment on the motion. I do believe that, I think this is a close call. I appreciate Ms. Kurt pointed out the fact that not only can we address reconfiguration, but we can address a reasonable shrinkage of, of the building. In this case, this is, actually, it's four hundred and, I think, nine feet less than the three thousand that, that the doctor allegedly wants or needs. Compare that to the fact that somebody said this might be a ninety-year-old tree. We saw a picture of the tree. It's in good shape. We have, we have testimony from our tree folks that this is a B...
Was it B-eight?
B-eight. It's a, it's a good, healthy tree. We have an opportunity to save it. It would actually be right by the entryway. It would not intrude upon the drive aisle, per se. And, and I think that, that we, I'm totally in favor of the redevelopment of this property. Obviously, that those houses were needed to go, but I think there's a, a more reasonable approach, which would be that twenty, the twenty, twenty-six-hundred-ninety-one, or twenty-five-hundred-ninety-one square foot project instead. So that's why I won't be supporting the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by, by Councilman Goodes, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
May I ask for a roll call vote, sir? Roll call, Dingfelder?
Nay.
Goodes?
Nay.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Viera?
Yes.
The motion carried with Dingfelder, Maniscalco, and Carlson voting no.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, the second reading and adoption will be on November twenty-first at nine-thirty a.m. Thank you.
We move onward to item number five.
Good evening, council. Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number five is the application AB-two nineteen-twenty-three located at nineteen-fifty-one Adamo Drive, Unit B. The current zoning on the property is IG, and the future land use is HI. The development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa development regulations. Should you approve it tonight, there are minor corrections listed in the site, or the staff report that would be required before second reading. The petition before you is requesting special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a small venue, beer and wine consumption on premises, and package sales off premises consumption. That's with proposed uses as a microbrewery, bar, retail sales, and light manufacturing. This, this petition was considered a change of use from the established use of retail sales. The total AB sales area is two thousand eight hundred and five square feet, which is all indoor. The required parking for the entire strip center, units A, B, and C, was calculated by the following. Unit A is retail sales for furniture, which is one space per thousand square feet. That, that equates to requiring four spaces. Unit B was the subject site, which was based off of occupancy per their floor plan, which is shown on your second page of your site plan, came to a hundred and eleven occupants times point-two-five, requiring twenty-eight parking spaces. And then the, the last unit, Unit C, for retail is four per thousand square feet, which required eight spaces. The total required parking for the site was forty spaces, and it's providing thirty-three spaces, which is a seventeen-point-five percent reduction. The subject property is along a mixed-use corridor village, and the distance separation requirement is two hundred and fifty feet from residential uses and two hundred and fifty feet from other AB sales establishments. The site plan states the hours of operation will be eleven a.m. to twelve a.m., Monday through Thursday, eleven a.m. to one a.m., Friday and Saturday, and eleven a.m. to twelve a.m. on Sunday. The site plan annotates the following: no outdoor amplified sound after eleven p.m., and also the sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space, and all permits issued after April first, two thousand and eleven, shall be kept on-site a copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan for the alcoholic beverage sales. There are three waivers requested before you tonight. Two of them come from twenty-seven-one-thirty-two, which is for the distance separation requirements. That's to reduce the required distance separation from residential uses from the required two hundred and fifty feet to two hundred and forty-nine-point-one feet. And then the, the distance separation from other AB sales establishments from two hundred and fifty feet to fifty-eight-point-six feet. The last waiver is that for the parking reduction, and that comes from section twenty-seven-two-eighty-three-point-seven, and that's to reduce the required parking from forty spaces to thirty-three spaces, which is again, the seventeen-point-five percent reduction. The closest residential use that was measured per exhibit C of the application was the Box Factory Lofts, which is the closest residential use. That's zoned YC-seven. It's located at two thousand and one, Second Avenue. Again, it's a residential use, and that's at the two forty-nine-point-one feet. And then the closest AB sales establishment is the Sitgo Gas Station. It's zoned IG. It's directly to the west of this, the subject property. It's located at nineteen-oh-one Adamo Drive. They hold a two APS, which is beer and wine, package sales only, and they're at fifty-eight-point-six feet. Again, the property is located along a mixed-use corridor village, and Planning and Design Development Coordination did find it inconsistent due to the, the required distance separation as well as the reduction in the required parking. Transportation found it inconsistent for the reduction in the required parking. The code criteria for city council for reference and consideration come from section twenty-seven-forty-three. This is a small venue, which is a commercial establishment with less than three hundred person occupancy, which sells alcoholic beverages, and that AB classification is the beer, wine, and liquor on-premise consumption as well as package sales. The uses that are proposed for this petition are bar, which come from our definitions, would be bar or lounge, retail sales, convenience goods, and the microbrewery aspect. Other sections for council's consideration come from twenty-seven-one-twenty-nine, which are the general standards, and then section twenty-seven-one-thirty-two, which is the regulations governing individual special uses. What I have here is a zoning map, and what I did was I outlined the, the best of my ability on this, not scale map is, well, to my scale, is where the establishment is requesting the alcoholic sales in that strip center. So Unit A, then B, and then C is right here. As you can see, the closest residential that I stated before is here to the northeast. Closest alcohol sales is the Sitgo Gas Station here. Top picture is the subject site, Unit B. Below is Unit A, which is towards the west. Top picture is Unit C, which is to the east. And then the bottom picture is just an overall site, kind of showing you the, the front area for the parking. Top picture is showing you the view as you pull up from the south, and there's rear parking right here. Here's a closer picture of the rear parking area. Top picture is nineteen-oh-one Adamo Drive, and it is also the closest AB sales establishment. Bottom picture is the neighbor to the east, which is a bank. There's the Box Factory Lofts, which is the residential use, and the neighbor to the south, which is the expressway. Both these pictures show one east on Adamo Drive and then one west on Adamo Drive. The TPD report did state there was no objection to this request, and staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Is this a property next to the gas station?
That's correct, sir. So this is the strip center right here. Here's the Sitgo Gas Station. Here's the bank. So there, Unit B, which is in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions? No? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, applicant?
Good evening. My name is Terry Haley. I'm representing the Roslett Company, and they're going to do business at the Bastard Brewing. I have some information to give you to support the waiver requests that we're asking for. So do I just give that to you? One of those I need. No, I have one. I have one. Well, first of all, I'm going to be honest with you. I am a virgin to the Tampa City Council, so bear with me and be easy on me, okay? How do you want to address this? Do we want to address each waiver, or do you want to overall perspective first, or... Okay, well, here's what we are. We are here, we're a mompa operation, and we're here today asking for your consideration and hopefully the permission to attach these waivers so that we get open. And now twenty to twenty-five years, we're back here like the previous thing earlier, and we're asking permission to open the in-town feature, growing over the twenty or twenty-five years. But right now, we're the small guy, okay? Our owners, together, have over forty years of home brewing experience, and then they have, together, seven to eight years of commercial brewing with one of the local very successful microbreweries here in town. As far as the waivers, the way I put my packet together was the way they were listed on the report, and the first one is the residentially zoned, okay? We, our site, Unit B, is located two hundred and forty-nine-point-one feet from the nearest residential. A requirement is of two fifty is, is standard. We're asking for that waiver. To support the need for this, that two hundred and forty-nine-point-one feet is to, from our premise, the Unit B, to their property line. If you go to their property line and you want... line. If you go to their property line and you want to proceed to the homes, you have to proceed forward one in a closed gate. Then you travel a hundred feet north. Then you have to go a hundred and thirty-two feet, I think it is, to the east, and that gets you to a door that simply gets you into a courtyard.
Excuse me, just a minute.
Yes.
Counselman Miranda.
I imagine it is a crow flies, so by the time you finish, we're being sent beat.
Okay. Well, I didn't do it as a crow flies.
No, I understand, but by the time you finish, we're being sent beat.
From the proper, well, I was going to say with doing that, the way you have to walk it, it's two hundred and thirty feet.
I understand.
Okay. As the crow flies, you're probably down to sixty feet onto that, a little over three hundred feet.
And you have to cross a highway, don't you? A six-lane road?
You have to cross a six-lane highway, which also has a turn lane median, plus there is also...
Don't give me any more about the road. I know, all I'm saying, if you're going to talk about the road, be here to midnight. It's six lanes and that's it.
Correct. And then there's also...
But since you're a virgin...
Okay, it has something to do with the road, what I'm trying to say.
I understand, sir.
Okay, so...
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to tell you that two fifty and two forty-nine-point-one, I understand what you're saying, but were you saying all the items that you're bringing up to me anywhere about the other than that road, to me?
Okay. We'll move on to the next one, if none of that's relevant, okay? So, now our request is for the nearest alcoholic beverage license. The requirement's two hundred and fifty feet. We are at fifty-eight-point-six, and that is the neighboring property, and our support there is that between the properties, there is a solid island of shrubbery with no breaks in it, and in order to get to that venue, you would have to go around it or leave the parking lot, enter Highway sixty, go to the light, come back in. We feel that their two AP, they are licensed to sell packaged beer and wine to go, and we are requesting a two COP with the microbrewery for craft beer only, consumption on premise, and with the legal growlers to go. So, we feel it's two different customers entirely. So, we don't feel that either one of us is interfering with either one on that one, okay? The third and final, and probably the biggest of the request of waivers, is the parking requirement. When you do the straight-up math, we're required forty spots. When doing the configuration, it comes up that we are seven spots short, which is seventeen, a little over seventeen percent shortage in parking. On our sheet here, we listed some justifications of that. One would be first, our hours of operation, that immediately after six p.m., the furniture stores close, so that allows more parking with us. We're not up against them. Also, our peak times, which say is nine to midnight, the Unit A is a eatery, and it has slowed down, okay? And then also, when you throw in new factors these days of Lyft and Uber, many people are not driving to these sites. We have the new scooters, which if you visit some of the other microbreweries within the parameters of their areas, you'll see many of the scooters out in front of the microbreweries, so many people are using that as mode of transportation. We will have a bicycle rack. Our residents cross street from the loft. We hope that, you know, they will simply take it upon themselves to cross the street, hopefully where they're supposed to, within the crosswalk at the light, and then, you know, just simply people carpool. And then a justification of all these is we feel that the craft beer drinker is one who drinks for quality versus quantity. So, we do not sell food. That's part of the requirements. Guests are allowed to bring in their food, have food brought in. Thus, it'll help our neighbors in selling more food. And the fact that we don't sell food, guest time at our operation is usually on a shorter stint because people are either going out to eat dinner, lunch, whatever the case may be, or they're coming from that. So, the turnover of our clientele seems to be more than versus someone just standing there all evening or all day, the turnover. So, that is our justification for the waivers. We're hoping you'll give us consideration, and again, that we can be a small business thriving in Tampa Bay and maybe someday go into something big.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate anybody here to publicly comment on item number five. If so, you may come forward at this time. Councilman, before, Ding Felder, do you have something to say?
All I can say is he had me at growler.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Councilman Maniscalco, are you comfortable, sir, taking item number five?
Yes, sir. I mean, I know this area well on Adamo, and regarding the distance separation and the waivers and whatnot, whatnot, it's, you know, it's a very wide road. The closest thing is going to be IKEA.
Councilman, was that part of the testimony that was talked about today, the IKEA? I'm just curious. Because I was out of the room at some point in time. In other words, what I'm asking is...
He didn't want you to testify.
I'm just asking council to be reminded that when you have your decision, you're not basing it on things that are not necessarily in the record. I apologize if you...
Oh, no, no, I was just, in regards to the waivers and whatnot, it's unique in the sense that it's separated because, you know, it's such a wide road. You have the expressway right behind it and whatnot. So, it's not, you know, the, anyways, whatever. I'll just read it. I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance approving special use permit S two for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue consumption on premises, and package sales off premises consumption, and making lawful sale of beer and wine at or from that certain plot, lot, plot, or tract of land at nineteen fifty-one Adamo Drive, Unit B. Tampa, Florida is more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date, and I think the applicant has shown competent and substantial evidence to support this, has met its burden of proof, and, you know, I think the waivers are, there's no issue there in having a moving forward.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on November twenty-first at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you, sir. And our final item for the night, number six.
Mary Semeniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number six is special use two nineteen zero six. It's for a commercial off-street parking lot at one-eleven South Fremont in a residential zoning district.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. This is in the central Tampa Planning District. It's right off of, right south of West Kennedy Boulevard. It's in a level C evacuation zone. Sorry, you saw my notes. We're on West Kennedy Boulevard. I have South Fremont Avenue. This is the Primrose School right here that you might be familiar with. I also have a self-storage facility up here to the north, and then a variety of commercial uses along West Kennedy Boulevard. The land use along West Kennedy Boulevard, that purple color, is urban mixed use sixteen. The land use of the subject site is residential twenty. That's that brownish color, and then this is community mixed use thirty-five. We did find this request consistent with the comprehensive plan and the surrounding area, and we found that the proposed use is appropriate with the surrounding area and that policy direction. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Mary Semeniego, for the record. Again, this property is on RM sixteen. It's a residential zoning district. In the RM sixteen zoning district, in order to put a commercial parking lot, you require a special use two approval governed by the criteria found in the zoning ordinance, section twenty-seven one thirty-two. Here's the zoning map of the property and the surrounding area. We are just south of Kennedy Boulevard on Fremont. The subject property is here. There's a planned development across the street for an office building. There's a mix of office buildings and retail uses on both sides of Kennedy, and, on both sides of Kennedy, either zone plan development or commercial general. Directly to the south of the subject property is a single fam-- or, I'm sorry, a multiple family zoning use. Here is a photograph of the subject property. It's currently vacant with two trees that will remain and be protected. The access for the property is off an alley, which will be improved per code. It is to the south of a commercial building that it will serve. This is the front of that commercial building from Kennedy. Directly to the south of the subject property is the residential structure, and then across the street is the office building with associated parking lot. Here is the site plan the applicant is proposing. It is to serve the commercial zoning lot and commercial use to the north, which is here. Again, I just showed you the photograph running on Kennedy. They're proposed, and they need parking, so they're proposing twelve parking spaces, and as well as onsite retention. Here are the two existing trees that will be preserved. As far as the special use criteria, they need two waivers. One, one of the special use criteria is that it cannot be separated from a right-of-way from the use it is serving. According to our code, an alley is a type of right-of-way, so they need a waiver to that to allow a parking lot across an alley from a commercial use that it's serving. And then the only other criteria is that for, up against the residential use, it's a fifteen-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot high wall. They want to do the fifteen-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot PVC fence. So, saying that, there are some minor changes to the site plan between first and second reading. If it is approved, from Plan Development listed on page two, Transportation has a minor correction as well as natural resources. Saying that, the Development Review Compliance Staff did find this consistent with the land development code. If it is a pleasure to grant the waivers, please remember the revision sheet. Do you have any specific questions on this application for me at this time?
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Applicant, please.
Evening, counsel. R.D. Central with Kimberly Horn, six-five-five North Franklin. We've worked with Mary Semeniego and staff. They've been great to work with. Just want to mention that we are saving the trees with this development, which has kind of changed the tune for this evening. So, I'm here to answer any questions from anybody from the public or counsel.
Any questions? None, it would appear. Thank you, sir. Anybody here from the public here to comment on item number six? If so, please come forward. Public comment, anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. Rob Harschberger. I live at one-fifteen South Fremont, which is one of the residential properties closest to the proposed parking lot. That section of Fremont, between Kennedy and Cleveland, is probably one of the most congested blocks in Tampa. There's an accident happening either at the Cleveland intersection or at the Kennedy intersection almost weekly. There's no restrictions on parking on either side of the street. It's also the only block on Fremont between Kennedy and Swan, where the parking is allowed on both sides of the street. There are children in that neighborhood, and that, the businesses that this parking lot would serve, if you go to the property and count, on the street in angled parking in front, there are twelve parking spots there, which are never occupied. There's also parking in the adjacent business, and across Kennedy, there's a vacant lot. So, there seems to be plenty of parking without having to develop that and bring more traffic into the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Not at this moment, but my neighbor has a few comments.
Sure.
My name is George Vass. I just live next to Rob. These lots, there are eight new family homes that were developed last year on Fremont, right next to the multiple use family that was shown on the picture. And out of those eight lots, there are four kids that live into those new townhomes, and there are two other families that to add more kids, and that road is deeply congested, as we found out living here this past year. So, we respectfully would like to take that into consideration, the safety of everybody into the, we surely don't need more cars there on that specific road, and we don't understand the need for the parking lots, as well as Rob mentioned, because the business there does have enough parkings next to the existing building. And that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Anybody else here to speak on item number six? Any rebuttal from the applicant?
I would just like to state that the parking that was mentioned along Kennedy, excuse me, on Fremont, which is right around here, is not parking necessarily for that office space. That's part of city right-of-way, if I recall correctly in speaking with Mary Semeniego. That was been there and constructed previously to this owner. I'm not exactly sure that it meets code, and on top of that, this parking lot will help to alleviate some of that congestion by pulling cars off of the street and into that parking lot that's proposed to be developed. I hope that you guys will take that into consideration for this parking lot and taking some cars coming off the street further down Fremont and kind of closer to that business.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Okay. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think Councilman Maniscalco, or you, Citro? Councilman Citro?
I'll be more than happy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number SU two-dash-nineteen-dash-zero-six. Ordinance being presented for first reading and ordinance approving special use permit S two, providing parking off-street commercial in RM sixteen residential family, multi-family, excuse me, zoning district in the general vicinity of one-one-one South Fremont Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, as more specifically described in section one. There are providing an effective date as the petitioner has met the burden of proof. This is going to also include waivers and site plan modification that is consistent with land use code.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
The motion carried with Ding Felder voting no. Second reading and adoption will be on November twenty-first at nine-thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. Okay, and that is the end of our hearings. Councilman Carlson, do you have anything for us, sir?
I forgot this morning to schedule some kind of follow-up to the presentation I made, and I'm getting input from the public. I hope that you all, I hope that you all will look at it and think about it at tammascorecard.com and think about what criteria you'd like to set. But can we set...
Wait a second. And if I may, we're still running a hearing, so if y'all could please move your conversations. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Marty or someone, could you tell us, tell me when the next time is that we might be able to... I don't think that would take more than fifteen minutes unless you all want to talk about it a long time, but...
Counsel, it depends how far out you want to do that. I've been informed by the clerk that between now and your Christmas holiday, things are starting to fill up, and you'll also have a second reading.
So, you want to go January...
If it can wait till then.
I'm okay waiting till then. What was that, January ninth?
But then again, what's the second, because the, January, you have the twenty-third, and you have presently, I don't know if anything was added to January twenty-third, but you have three staff reports on the twenty-third.
So, I'd like to...
Or you have a workshop.
I'd like to make a motion that I would come back and take input from you all on what I presented this morning on January twenty-third.
Second. And is that in the morning or the evening?
Well, let me ask you this. You don't need staff. It's going to be discussion amongst council. Can that be put under the staff, can that be put under unfinished business section of the calendar and taken up at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Because it doesn't involve, it's an internal council discussion.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, was that something that was presented under new business this morning? There was no substance to the motion, so I just need to know.
I believe it was done on the presentation as, how was it described on the morning?
Yeah, I think it was item number sixteen.
I guess it could be classified as follow-up for discussion on Councilman Carlson's presentation on metrics in the city of Tampa. Statistically, is that adequate?
Yep.
Or Tampa's scorecard.
Yep.
Thank you.
Scorecard, I'm sorry.
And again, that was going to be on the twenty-third of January under council's reports at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by whom, I'm sorry?
By me.
By Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir? Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda. Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, let's remember... Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, let's remember we do have a CRA workshop on Monday, the twenty-eighth at nine a.m. in these chambers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the reminder. Uh, Councilman Niskakow. Uh, Councilman Goode's.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was notified by Mr. Shelby and my aide, uh, went to the Zion Cemetery meeting, uh, for housing today. Uh, we had previously made a motion to go out because the community was saying, where has council been? Apparently at that meeting, uh, it was, uh, spoke about again, and, uh, the housing gave a date of possibly November seventh at, uh, one-thirty P.M. in the afternoon. Uh, it's short notice right now, but she just came from that meeting and Mrs. Shelby brought it up. So, uh, wanted to get it in the public eye right now. If that's conducive to everybody, if not, we'll have to go back and ask them for the date.
That's Fri- it's a Fri- it's a Friday at one-thirty in the afternoon.
November seventh at one-thirty P.M.? Oh, it's on eighth?
I believe it's November.
So it's a Friday?
In the afternoon.
Afternoon, one-thirty.
The question is, counsel, that would have to be set up similarly to the way of the water plant tour, which was quite an effort to remind you that it also required to comply with the public meetings law, um, a great deal of logistics, including having the cable office there to do it and having the clerk then do the minutes for it. Um, I did speak with Ms. Henderson, and she also wanted, she brought to my attention that on December fifth, the, um, real estate division and a representative from the Tampa Housing Authority are going to be present here to provide research on the history of the Zion Cemetery and how Robles Park was developed on top of the remains of human beings. That's on your December fifth regular session under, um, staff, uh, staff reports. Uh, but if council does want to do this, um, obviously, we're going to, um, uh, see if council is able to attend because that would have to be set as a, um, uh, a, a meeting of council, and we have to work with the, the legal department and with cable to comply with the public meeting and the clerk's office.
Per Ms. Henderson, she said that, uh, I guess the chief of staff and the city attorney was at this meeting, and they asked her that they wanted to be a part and come along this tour as well, so.
So I guess the question for council is, does council want to set a special meeting, um, for that? And again, the other thing we have to also make sure is we can comply with the ADA requirements as well, which is what we had to do with the water tour. So, um, the only, the only issue, the only issue from my perspective, counsel, and, and I'm glad the councilman brought it up tonight because frankly, the council does not meet until the day before. Your next, your next meeting is the day before the scheduled meeting, so that wouldn't be enough time to even notice it at that point in time. So, um, we're on a very, very tight schedule in terms of that, because council's not meeting next week to be able to set this up logistically. So it's council's pleasure, or how council wishes to proceed. I just need direction.
Uh, you, we're asking, are we good on November, what, eighth at one-thirty?
In the afternoon. And how long will it be? Do you know?
I don't have all, I don't have all the details right now. I just got it. I know I got the date, but I know it's one-thirty. So I would imagine it would probably be an hour, hour and a half.
I gotta pick up my son at school at three, but before that, I'm good. They grow up fast.
So what's council's pleasure? Is it a motion?
I think we'll make a motion for all in favor.
Do you have, do you have, um, do you have a location as yet? Do you know where it is going to be?
It's going to be at the housing, uh, Robles Park, I'm, I'm assuming.
Is there an office or is there a meeting space?
I got limited, I just got that information.
Do we need the address here for purposes of the motion for procedural issues?
Well, frankly, it would be helpful, yes.
Then let's, can we get it? I mean, just, just, just while, while John and it does his, uh, maybe we can get the, the address.
Yeah, I'm sure I can get the address of Robles Park, yeah, sure.
Yeah, let's look it up.
And then if the motion could be stated in its entirety for the record, that would be helpful. Thank you.
You're, you're looking, Councilman Goode's, for the address for Robles Park?
At Robles Park, look.
Do they have a meeting space? I, I guess there must have been a meeting space because you said there was a meeting today. Councilman, you said there was a meeting today, so there must have been a meeting space.
No, they have the meeting, they have the meeting over at the Housing Authority on Cypress.
Oh.
Conference room.
Oh, so we don't even know whether there's, we don't even know whether there's a space at Robles Park to accommodate the public.
They usually have an office.
It's an office over there, and they got a small computer room in the, in the, in the back, so I, I don't, I don't know.
I don't, uh, well, it, it raises a lot of issues, I.
How about, how about we put it out there, Mr. Shelby, and then we see if it's, uh, valid by tomorrow? So, so at least you, you, you preserve it today.
Right.
And then we can analyze it tomorrow, and if it's not, then we can.
Come tomorrow.
Okay, that's an excellent suggestion, so then.
If I may.
You said you had the address then?
Um, I don't, Councilman Niskakow, were you able to find it?
No, I looked up Google Earth to see it. I mean, you see the residential structure, I don't see a main office or an entrance or anything with the address.
If she's watching.
Central Lake, it's central Lake.
Brandon, do we have an office for Robles Park?
I don't.
Or, um, an address for Robles Park? If anybody. And, and how about this, let's, um, Councilman Goode's, could you wait like one minute on that till we get the address? And then we'll, if, do you have any other motions, sir? Okay, Councilman Dingfelder, anything, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know what, I'm gonna, because this is, this case is still pending for second reading, I'm going to hold this, so, no.
Okay, um, Councilman Niskakow.
Uh, yes, I wanted to mention this. Um, Brian Sullivan, who works, you know, and handles the photography and the video and everything here, his, um, his mother passed away, you know, and just to extend my, uh, my condolences to him and, and his family. I saw he posted on Facebook the other day, and I wanted to make mention of it, so.
That's so nice. Uh, my, my condolences to them. Brian and Kim are such a nice, uh, couple. Every time I see them together, it's, uh, it's just very nice. You know, they're recently married, and it, like, the song goes, "Love is lovelier the second time around."
Yeah.
Uh, sometimes the third or fourth time around, but it's, uh, but it certainly is lovelier for them, so God bless them. So thank you for that, my, uh, my condolences for that. Um, and then in terms of me, I don't believe I have anything. I'm gonna just talk and babble until we find the address for Robles Park.
Until I fall asleep.
Yeah, or otherwise.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a meeting on Sunday. We have one today, Saturday and Monday, so should we schedule one on Sunday too? As a joke.
I know, you're right. Well, I'll meet a church or synagogue. There you go. And here we go, Sonya to the rescue, sir.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you, ma'am.
Our hero.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for November eighth, that's a Friday, at one-thirty P.M. to go to the Robles Park Village at thirty-three oh five North Avon Avenue. And to also have the administration, uh, get back to us about setting up a reference to the, uh, CB, CTTV, uh, for, uh, Sunshine Compliance.
And that's at one-thirty P.M.?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I guess the, the address will be somewhere to be determined? Is that correct?
The main building.
At Robles?
Robles Park Village, thirty-three oh five North Avon.
Oh, thirty-three oh five North Avon. Okay, and, um, about, uh, did you want to set a time, from what time to what time, if you know, how long it'll approximately take? Any, any suggestions?
Yeah, I'm guessing maybe one-thirty, two-thirty, a couple hours.
Okay, well, I'll.
By the time we talk and walk and get back, you know, it ain't gonna be that long out there, you know?
Okay.
And, and before, Councilman Dingfelder wanted to say something.
Yeah, um, and Councilman Goode's, I know you're totally plugged into this issue, and we appreciate all the time you put into it. I just want to say, um, I'm a little concerned about this being premature. And the only reason I say is I went to a meeting over at the History Center, and, um, the number two at the, uh, Housing Authority, Leroy Moore was there, and he was speaking to, you know, the additional research that needed to be done and, uh, the, the, the potential plans that they had for a park and, you know, that, or a memorial park and that sort of thing. I'm, I'm just wondering what, what we have to offer. Um, and, and I, and I don't, I'm very, uh, interested in this issue. I'm very sympathetic with what's going on, but I don't want to give people, uh, some sort of false hope that, that we have the answers right now because I don't know how deeply we as a city are, are involved in this in regard to the fact that we're not, we don't own the land. I mean, I think we should be involved at some point, but, but I'm just concerned it might be a little premature.
I, I think the, the, the gist of it all is that, uh, all of your state leaders have been out there, uh, and viewed the site, have gone to those meetings. I've gone to a couple of meetings with the Housing Authority, and the question is, how come city council hasn't come out here and seen this item or visited it? So that's when I came back and said, okay, let me, I'll bring it back to the council. And again, it came up again today, uh, chief of staff and, uh, Ms. Brown was there as well, and it was a big scene there. Where's council? And my aide said, we've already made that gesture. We just need a date, and we've been trying to get that date for a while. And finally, apparently, um, Mrs., um, I think Mrs., uh, the communications director for the housing said that we were in touch with the wrong person. She's the liaison to do that. So I believe that's how that date came up today and a time to date, dealing with the communication person, um, uh, Ms. Lillian Stringer. So that's how that came about today with that date. So it's basically us going out there saying, we've been out there, hear those concerns for those few residents that may come out there. Uh, right now, they're still doing, the Housing Authority's still doing that thing, trying to get, uh, if they're moving people out, just giving updates on what they're doing, and basically, we're just, just trying to say we're concerned as, as, as a city council because it's within our, in the city.
So is this gonna be one of their regular meetings, one of those, the committee's regular meeting?
No, like, committee, I don't, uh, they meet, I would say every couple of weeks, so it's not one of them. It's just a special thing just for council to go out there with the Housing Authority, from what I'm gathering, and some of the residents.
Is the Housing Authority members, are the members of the Housing Authority going to be present?
I, I, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think Housing Authority will be there, no.
Oh, because I, that would raise, that would raise an issue to them.
No, Housing Authority won't be there. I'm sure it would just be the resident council people and probably one of the executives of the, the Housing Authority, Ms. Stringer, maybe Mr. Moore or somebody. But I don't see the, uh, the board. I haven't been told of any board, uh, being there.
And, uh, Councilman Carlson.
To Marty and Council, Councilman Goode's, is there a, a regularly scheduled meeting that we could just get invited to? Like we would get invited to anything else? So would it set out the expectation that?
I mean, uh, I don't, I mean, I don't know about, you know, you have your resident council meetings at Robles, and you have this new, um, I guess, committee that's dealing with the issue, uh, with the cemetery. So I, I don't know how that would work if we went to some of those meetings, because we can't be in those meetings discussing things, so I don't.
We just can't talk, right?
I'm sorry.
Because I've been to those meetings.
The, the concern, the concern is that the Sunshine Law has certain requirements, not just notice. To notice a meeting is just one leg of the stool that has to be, uh, complied with. And these sort of tours or walking tours are very, very difficult to comply with and problematic. Um, and frankly, we learned how difficult it was with the, um, water plant. But what I'm, but you raised a good point because ideally, it's sort of like what you do with Thane or what you're doing with the town hall, where you have a location and a time and a place. And that's where people can come to, and that way you have, part of the, one of the requirements for a public meeting is you have to have proper notice, but you also have to have a proper location. And that has certain legal requirements that we have to meet. Um, and it has to be accessible to people, and they have to have.
Marty, there, there are events all the time where we all get invited. We don't even know the others are invited. We show up and we don't say anything. But if there's, if there's a committee meeting, if, if Orlando gives us the schedule and we just show up.
You just can't say, you can't just.
Yeah, we do, then we just can't talk. I mean, do you think that would satisfy the concern? Have all the other elected officials had a special tour and everything, or are they just showing up at those committee meetings?
There was a time, and they, it was, it was a time, they invited everybody to be there, and, you know, you get there, and that's how it was.
Oh, microphone.
You toured the site. You know, I, I was called to a meeting for a press conference over there with, uh, state rep, uh, senators, and, uh, that's how that kind of went.
I'm happy to go to whatever you recommend, and as long as Marty says okay.
Well, I, I, mind you, mind you, ju- just like with any other, uh, issue, there's nothing to keep council members from going out individually. One suggestion that somebody made was to stagger it on, you know, how some people do it on over a period of hours, if people want to do that. I know it's more difficult, but, um.
We're, we're fine. I mean, right, I mean, Councilman Goode's has made a motion. We can all be there if, let me ask you, is, is anybody?
Where is, where is there? I mean, specifically.
We have the address.
Yes, but the question is, can that be accommodating legally for a public meeting?
Well, we'll find out by tomorrow. We made, we made the motion to, uh.
Was a vote, was a vote on it, by the way?
We haven't, we haven't voted on it yet.
Okay.
Um, we made the motion, and hopefully tomorrow you can see if, if you could please, if it's legally sufficient. If not, then we'll make Plan B. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm fine to support it. I'll, I'll be there.
And I have Sonya, get in touch with Ms. Stringer, since Ms. Stringer told Sonya.
Uh, Lillian Stringer?
Yes. So since Ms. Stringer told, uh, my aide, hey, she's the contact, so we'll make sure that Sonya, first thing in the morning, call Ms. Stringer, get those particulars in.
She's at the, uh, what law firm? My buddy used to work there. Um, darn it, Saxon Gilmore.
No, she's a, I don't, with the Lillian Stringer, I know, I guess, she's the Housing Authority.
Yeah, yeah, but she works at Saxon Gilmore.
Oh, okay, I don't, I didn't, I didn't know that, okay.
I believe she is.
Well, I think, I think it's totally appropriate that at least the coun- it's an action of council, and it's voted on. It becomes a motion of council, and we have clear direction. That'll, that'll be good.
Good. Okay, so we have a motion. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Goode's. A second, was it, Councilman Niskakow? Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Jim Crewe, City Clerk's office, for, for clarity, that was for a special call session of council at Robles Park, November eighth at one-thirty P.M.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a, uh, a motion to receive and file. All in favor? Any opposed? That was done by Councilman Niskakow. I'm just gonna say it was second of it, Councilman Goode's. Congratulations. Thank you. Have a good evening, council.